I'd like to call the order, the meeting to order, a city council workshop agenda on Monday, December 12, 2016. Just to remind everybody, mind your mayor, too, there's a 6:00 meeting, regular meeting, at 6:00 PM. We are not all around the table. Have we heard from Councilman Osborne? Well, then, I'm assuming she's going to join us, but I'm not going to—
She's in the door.
She's in the doorway. Good. By the time I'm out of my breath here, she'll be here, okay? We have one item on the agenda tonight, and I'd like to— I'm going to change this, Paul, so you know this, okay? We'll be receiving Fire Chief Paul Louiezy and Graham Holland, project manager for ORH, to present. Normally, remember, I said, "Wait till you're finished." But somehow, in this one, I think there'll be a call for questions. So if you could help me at that point, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have transition points throughout the presentation that we've rehearsed as far as for questions.
All right. So we'll wait for them to notify us, okay? You have the floor.
Madam Mayor, if I may start before the Fire Chief and then also our consultant. One is, I just wanted to point out that this report, it's—there's a lot of data in here, evidence-based and objective, but it is one—
It's very important that it's—
—understood that it's just one step in the process, is we look at when, how fire stations are funded, and also what we look at in terms of other interim solutions. So again, this is one very important step in that process, but it's not the end-all-be-all. So tonight, we really do want active seat council discussion and direction. And Mayor, I'll help at the end of the work session to really hone in on the direction that we feel like we've received from council, what those next steps are. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear to the public as well as we get into this.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. All right? You have—yes, Councilman Stip.
I would like to make a motion that we go into an executive session to get advice from the attorney before we begin.
Do I hear—what he said is, "Councilman Stip would like to go into an executive session."
To get advice from the attorney before we begin.
Before we begin this meeting.
Before we begin.
All right. So I hear a motion.
Sherry made the motion.
Sherry made a motion. Second?
I seconded.
Who made the motion?
Bill.
Bill made the motion. You second it. All right. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Then we will now convene into an executive session.
Yeah, sure.
She wants a bang. I'd like to reconvene the meeting, and so we'll begin with Fire Chief Paul Louiezy and Graham Holland, the project manager for ORH, to present. Hello, gentlemen.
Can we switch mics there with someone?
Mine answers.
Yeah, I'll take it. Sorry.
Wait, just one moment. Will someone take staff that back and get that microphone working? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're going to talk about the 2016 fire station study that was completed. So during the budget process for FY 2016-17, City Council approved a comprehensive fire station study to review the needs of the entire city. After we issued a request for proposal through our procurement process, we had three companies that submitted their bids to the city of Goodyear. After a comprehensive review from the selection committee, we awarded that contract to Operations, Research and Health Incorporated, or ORH. ORH is a management company that has been established since 1986 and assists entities in cities with resource planning in the public sector. Since their inception, ORH has completed more than 600 reviews aimed at optimizing resources for efficient and effective operations. They began working with us in August of 2016, in the last week of August of 2016, to begin looking at the entire scope of project, and they've been working with us ever since that point in time to develop the finished product that's in front of you. So tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Graham Holland, who has been the principal on the project with us, working hand-in-hand with us, looking at this data and really developing the final report that you'll see tonight. So I'm going to have Graham start off on the presentation, but before we do start, knowing that we are a little shorter on our two-hour time limit now, we'll make sure that we give you plenty of time for questions and answers as we transition through the presentation. But there will definitely be some slides that Graham will accelerate through a little bit more, not to gloss over, but to just provide for more conversation and discussion at certain points. But we can certainly go back and discuss those points if you felt like we went over anything too fast.
But this study is online, right?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Graham?
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. So as Paul said, we have a long itinerary to run through today, so please, we will pause the questions as we go through. In terms of the structure, I've got that in front of us, there'll be opportunity at the end of each section to ask a few questions, but really, what we're going to be talking through is the approach that we have taken in terms of the analysis and the modeling work to developing the recommended optimal solution that is presented in this presentation and in the summary report we provided as well. We've already had a little introduction in terms of who ORH are, so I won't elaborate too much more on this, but really, throughout the 30 years that we have been in operation, our focus really has been working almost solely for emergency services and a few other public sector bodies, with the questions always really based around how do we match the resources that we have in this local area to the demand that is faced upon the service that we're working for. And in order to do that work, it involves a combination of analysis, looking at what has been happening in a service, understanding the trends that have been taking place, using a combination of different modeling tools to identify what would happen if certain changes could be made, and developing optimal solutions, and consulting with the department or the emergency service that we are completing the project for. And I think that's something that comes through, maybe not so much in the report, is that, of course, although there's a lot of technical detail that you would have seen in the report and lots of data analysis there, supported with that was consultation with Chief Louiezy and the team at Goodyear Fire Department, so that was—we were always, while it's got independent recommendations being made, it was certainly being informed by information provided by the department. So just a little bit more about where we've worked. Across the world, really, over certainly over the last 10 years, we've expanded into, I think, a dozen different countries where we have completed similar studies for this. Station location studies for services with only one career fire station to services which have over 300 fire stations, such as New South Wales Fire and Reski. So a broad range of different shapes and services, some with growing populations like yourselves, some where they're faced with financial challenges and having to make cuts to the services provided. So we'll often pose different types of questions, but the be-all and end-all of our work really is about delivering, as Paul said, an efficient and effective response to the emergency instance that the services are faced with. Okay? So, and just within Arizona, we, in 2015, completed a fire station location study in Tempe, which gave us a good grounding in terms of how fire departments operate in Phoenix, in particular, the automatic aid arrangements associated with the dispatch centers. So that was a very informative part of our knowledge for the local area. So that's introduction to who we are. Any questions on that side of things before we go into methodology?
Counsel? I think we're good. Go.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about the methodology, both in terms of the specifics that we are required to undertake and our ORH's general approach to this kind of question. So this is the scope in terms of what was set by the city at the start of the project. As I already mentioned, the consulting with the department was a key element to this as well, that principally reviewing what has been happening and then looking to build recommendations for the future based on development areas with focus on response times and how best to locate stations to provide the optimal response to instance, or the whole range of instances that the department is faced with responding to. So in order to do that, the main process we went through, data collection, understanding what sources of data were required, consulting with members not only of the fire department, other departments within the city to receive population data, GIS information, everything to give us all the data that was required to provide a technical assessment of how the fire department is currently operating, completing a whole suite of analysis on the historical information that we had, and also the population data. I'll come on to the modeling in more detail as we go through the presentation, but we used a combination of simulation and optimization modeling to develop options and assess how they would operate, how they would have an effect on the real-life, day-to-day processes within the fire department, and then building towards actually making a decision, consulting with members of the fire department and other experts to make sure that we are able to give a robust and appropriate solution that we're putting forward within this final report. Those bullet points below really summarize the step-by-step process that we go through from taking the data to analyzing that to derive the important information that we needed to be able to populate the models with real data, and then use those models to generate different options and build from those options an appropriate solution going forward. And as mentioned in the introduction, we started in the last week of August, and the 16-week timetable brings us to where we are today. We made a good start in terms of the time that the data was provided, which meant that we have been able to complete the project on time, and so that brings us to where we are today, presenting the final reports to council. That was a very brief overview of the methodology. I'm sure there are some questions on that, but some of those will be tackled in more detail as we go through each section, so there are slides on data collection, analysis and modeling. But just anything on the overview before we go into more detail?
Counsel? Councilmember Pizzillo?
Quick question. And you may cover it a little bit later on, is what was your optimum response time? What was your target that you were shooting for when you were deciding where to place a station and the growth patterns on what that response time would be and when you would need these future stations? Is that going to be covered later, or?
It will be covered later. Do you want me to address the answer now, or should we—
Yeah, I'm just curious, are you using five minutes, six minutes, seven minutes, eight minutes?
Can you wait for that, since we're going to cover that? And you'll be the first question on the block for that one?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Okay.
All right. So we can get on here.
Okay. Thank you. So in terms of the data collection exercise, the first part of the process, we provided a sort of a high-level data request, of which we see in front of us here, some of the different data sets that were required, but within some of these much more detailed levels of information that we needed, and passed that information on to the fire department, and they put us in touch with the right people to provide the right information. So it covers not only the instant data that was the main focus, which I'll come on to on the next slide, but also information regarding current locations, suitability of sites, the geography of the local area, all of the population information, and then the more stuff you can't measure, getting the information about how the service is operating and discussing with different members of the department, different procedures that take place, doing a tour of the city and where the stations are to really get a better understanding and see what it's like on the ground, as well as having that sort of numerical emphasis on the work. Excuse me. So that really gave us not only just that technical knowledge, but a bit more of a—almost a personal flavor to the information that we are receiving. But the main data source that we require is the historical instant information. We are provided with a sample going from January 1, 2010, to July 31, 2016, which originates from the CAD system, the computer-aided dispatch system within the Phoenix Regional Dispatch Center. On this, it needs to be supplemented with some additional information from other software used within the fire department, FireView and Zoll, to give us extra detail on different parts of the data that we received, and for all of the analysis elements of the work. Because of the relocation of the vehicles from Station 181, it was deemed appropriate that the analysis would focus just on the full calendar years from 2010 to 2015, because 2016 represented a change to the norm and therefore wasn't an appropriate set of data to include. So that's data sources that were there. Anything on what we were using before we get into how we then used it?
The question I've already just covered. Yeah. Yeah, Sherry. Loretano?
For the 2016 data, you said you didn't use it. Did you not use it for the entire city or just coming out of 181?
For the entire city, because there were knock-on effects because of the relocation of the engine or the ladder and ladder truck. That would have—it meant that the whole system was operating slightly differently because there was no station, there's no companies in place at 181.
So even like Estrella, that's kind of far out of it, that wasn't considered for 2016?
No. Felt it was best to make a like, with like-to-like comparison between the different areas of the city, so we took five full years instead.
Counselman Stip?
And what—what result do you think that had on the data conclusions?
Very little impact would be my take on that. If we had included the data from 2016, we would have seen almost certainly that would have a slightly higher level of instant demand than 2015, but trying to draw conclusions about response times that have been challenging, because you would have seen longer response times, assumingly, into that part of the city without any companies based in that area, and therefore, trying to pick that apart and the difficulty of trying to extinguish what was appropriate data to be basing the next step of conclusions on would have been a difficult process.
But in regards to the Estrella Mountain Ranch area, where Station 182 is, that does not normally—is not normally supported by any additional Goodyear company, the longer response times that occur there from in 2016 were not taken into consideration. So if we saw a spike or an increase in response time data in 2016, that is not reflected?
I said, it was based on the calendar years, 2010 to 2015.
Yeah. If we didn't—you know, Station 182 is like the—it's the outlier—
Yeah.
—in the whole thing. So I think that—I get it for the whole rest of the city. I'm just wondering if there was a way to quantify or statistically come up with a—it would have been, you know, a couple of percentage points off, but, you know, you know, I don't know that would have made a difference between five minutes and six minutes, or in that case, up there, eight minutes or 10 minutes. I don't know if it would have made a difference.
I think I'm speculating here, because we haven't gone through that process, the decision was made at the start of the project, but when you look at the trends of what the response times have been doing, and you can't just look at one or two instances of spike, because that could occur for any number of reasons, that the trend of response times has been, like the trend of instant volumes, it has been increasing, but we would not have expected a significant jump from 2015 to 2016. There would be, you know, the chance of there being one or two incidents where you see a longer time. That can happen anywhere, as is the case of probability. But my expectation, if you went back and looked at it and the trend, then I think—and carried through all of the data in 2016, I think it would be a fairly steady line going through that, but we haven't—
Can I inter—
Yeah, and I think that was important to say, and that's what I was trying to get through now.
I held off, Councilman Pizzillo, and we're talking response times now, so in this, I'm feeling a little guilty about this. Is this where you could address this, or do you want to—
Madam Mayor, this—it will still come. The information, yes.
It'll still come, all right, Joe. And we have two other questions. Sherry, I think, in—
She covered my phone.
Oh, you are. Okay. Councilman Osborne?
I just wanted to get a little more input as to—you have listed ambulance locations, and I know that was not necessarily the scope of your work, but as we, as a council, discuss taking on ambulance service, I'm just curious as to how that played into the data for you.
In truth, it did not during the course of the project. It was something that we requested to understand where ambulances were located within the city, but we made a decision to focus—because the main terms of reference clearly focused on station locations, that where station location should be is going to be a decision of where the main engine companies are going to be, and so when we were doing the modeling, it was focusing on engine companies, on ladder, ladder trucks, and the battalion chiefs, not trying to capture every little thing there. So, no, it did not play a significant part in the role. It was—
It's just mentioned, so that's why I was asking.
It was mentioned, because it's the kind of thing where it does help us to build up a fuller understanding and to make sure we can see what's going on in terms of how private ambulance companies are operating in tandem with the fire department.
It's a look at the entire system, and I think that's something that we really wanted to make sure we were doing, as we looked at the entire city, and it's how the city impacts and is reflected to the response data.
Okay. I think that's the question, Phil. Go ahead.
Thank you. So moving on to the data analysis part, or second part of the process, really, data analysis from ORH's perspective is taking large amounts of data, and we're talking about tens, thousands of records over the six-year period, and trying to produce relevant informative descriptions of that data. So taking all of the instant records that have occurred and understanding how they trend out over time, looking at station locations and what they mean, looking at the population, where they live, and making maps that help make any decisions during the process. From our side, and I won't bore everyone with the different types of techniques that are—that are there, but a whole range of statistical analyses, using GIS, using probabilistic methods to make sure we've got a full understanding of what's going on, and those are the skills that we've developed over the 30 years of working for fire departments and other emergency providers as well. And this is really the process. So once we've collected the data, we'll go through a checking process, so there was a lot of communication in the first few weeks of the projects between ourselves and members of the department, in terms of making sure that when we were seeing different points in the data, checking why they were occurring, and going through to make sure that any issues were tackled early on with the data. There were always issues in terms of large CAD information, and so we tackle those in tandem with the department before going on to produce some of the visualizations of the data analysis that we'll share with you now. The analysis in the full report that we provided the fire department is many, many pages of lots of graphs and tables, and gives a complete overview of everything that has occurred over the last six years, but we'll present some of the key ones now, and also all of the analysis that we do. While it's important to be able to give us a historical view of what has been happening, all of the analysis is also designed to be fed into the modeling work that we're going to be doing in the next part of the project. So I'm going to quickly go through the next four or five slides, but really, when we're looking at the analysis, we're considering how many instances they are, what type of instance, when they occur, and where they occur, and so all of the information on the next few slides is about addressing those types of questions. So as you're all aware, the number of instances has been increasing year on year, been a 44% increase from 2010 to 2015. The different types of instance that have occurred by month, show you on this graph, the increase really is driven by EMS calls, which increased over the six years, and in the last year particularly, there was a significant spike, or in 2015, I should say, there's a significant spike in the number of BLS, basic life support, calls that occurred, whereas the other instant types, fire service calls, are pretty stable across the entire sample. In terms of when they occur, it's important to make sure that we've got that balance reflected in the model, how it differs by hour of the day. It's very stable, really, between about 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning and 7:00 and 8:00 in the evening. You can see that the small peaks do occur sort of around home time. So that's the when. Moving on to the where, we can look at the locations of the instance that have occurred in terms of those responded to within Goodyear and outside of the city. Just a quick note on mobile, there are very few instances that are there and in discussion with the fire department. Early on, we'd made the decision that the assumption would be that that two-person team operating out there would stay as-is and was not part, really, of the station configurations that we are looking at into the future. And then just a couple more slides. One of the interesting points that we felt was sort of the different spread of where the instances are in terms of EMS, so the medical calls versus the fire instance. Generally speaking, and there are obviously different trends that occur here, the medical calls are more likely to occur north of I-10, whereas the greatest concentration of fire calls are sort of between I-10 and Gila River. So that's the where of the instant types. We also looked at it by year to understand how the spread was changing by the years that we looked at through the sample period. Actually, what we saw is that the pattern of where instances are occurring actually remains quite similar during the process. It's simply that things become a bit more denser during the time, that everywhere has experienced an increase in the number of calls, not just areas, but there's been new housing during that time. Everywhere has seen an increase in the number of instance that have occurred during the time. So that was a quick run-through of some of the demand summaries. Then in terms of looking at the response profile, we received probably about a dozen. Do you want to take a question?
Okay. I'm sorry, there's two wanting to ask a question immediately, so I'm first—Joe, is Pizzillo, you had a question on response time and then—
Well, I do have a response, but first, you have a lot of data that you're collecting on various call times. Did you ever do a risk analysis? And what I mean by a risk analysis, since you have all this data, because we have mutual aid, is what is the impact? Because we have some outliers, both west and up the hill. When that fire station for the city that's covering that area is out of service, and what's the percentage of when the response time to get to an incident, since that one's out, both west and the one up the hill, if that's not there? Because with the amount of data you have, I would think you'd be able to be able to come up with what the risk is involved as a result of only having the one either up the hill or out west, I believe, there's only one that services that area as well.
Yes, we did look at that as part of the analysis process, trying to understand. Provided some maps to show if the—if the sort of nearest station is not available because it's out for whatever reason, what that means in terms of the response times. We looked at how frequently each company within Goodyear was responding to calls within other fire departments, and also conversely, how often different departments were coming in to Goodyear, to really understand that balance of what the to and fro between yourselves and your neighbors in terms of how the operating to response meant.
So that would impact your overall response time for those areas?
Yes.
Then that was figured into your calculation?
Yes, it was, yes. So within—we know how likely it is, for example, for Engine 183 to be responding into Avondale, and so that was part—we analyzed that, saw that it was spending, let's say, 3% of its time in Avondale, or whatever the number might be in terms of its overall time available. time available, and then that would be a factor in the model to say that if a call does occur in that part of Goodyear, when you'd normally send Engine 183, actually, there's a chance that it might be on a call in Avondale, and therefore, wouldn't be available to respond, and the model would then have to send whatever the next nearest engine company would be to deal with that incident.
One more on the response time. What is your ideal, or what numbers were you using for response time when you're identifying timelines and locations?
Again, that's a very similar question to one we're asking. So, I will deal with it now, though, so I think we'll want to address that. So, what we've presented in this slide we've got up here, and what I've been talking about so far, is the analysis. And so, that's been looking back at what has been happening. And to that, we can report any measure that we're interested in. We showed times in terms of average response times to show what that looked like. We showed times in terms of a 90th percentile, because that's one of the NFPA mentioned measures. And we also looked at a percentage in five minutes or in 5 minutes 20 seconds, again, the NFPA-related statistics. So, we could report the analysis however we wanted to, and we gave various different measures in terms of how that was shown. When it came to doing the modeling component and deriving different optimal solutions, we initially presented a few different options to the department, including the approach of trying to maximize the number of incidents that were met within five minutes. And we also presented an approach which was to minimize the average response times to incidents. Those were two major options that we presented. And looking at the results that some initial greenfield modeling gave us, in discussion with the chief, it was determined that minimizing average times was the most appropriate to use, partly because of the results that we got from the initial modeling, but also because we felt it was a fair system, fairest system. It's very difficult to say that five minutes, six minutes, four minutes, 10 minutes, whatever number of minutes you want to choose, is the right time to be aiming for. So, what we took is that an average time, trying to minimize that, means that we're trying to make sure that every incident that occurs gets the quickest response to it as possible. So, that was the, when you come to talk about the optimization modeling, that was the approach that was used in there, trying to minimize average response time so that they made the key types of incidents within the city.
Yeah, I always thought, and again, this is not my area especially, so I refer to, you know, the chief and et cetera, but my understanding is response time is critical, especially if health is involved, you know, if it's a health emergency, and fire, any of them. Health, you know, the time is, so that's kind of why I was asking the questions on response time, is what triggers and what is the optimal, especially if you have one station that is servicing a wide area that happens to be out of loop, and all of a sudden, there's a 10, 12, 15-minute response time to get to an area where there happens to be a medical emergency, then you've got a problem. I just, and again, I just want to make sure those situations are being addressed, because to be honest with you, when I saw the years, again, you know, I don't claim to be an expert, but they just seem to be not in line with what my gut was telling me. So, that's why I'm trying to get a better feel on how this kind of lines up, so.
Sure. So, just to add one thing now, which I should have said. So, by minimizing the average, what we're saying is that it's better to get a response in two minutes than it is to get a response in three minutes. Better to get a response in three minutes than in four minutes, et cetera, et cetera. What we didn't, the alternative approach, just saying, get there in five, and that's all we want to be trying to do, is that that says, well, getting there in one minute is the same as getting there in five minutes, and getting there in six minutes is the same as getting there in 16, which is not, we feel, an appropriate way to looking at it. So, trying to minimize the average meant we were always trying to say, the quicker, the better, which is applied, and that's applied across the city. So, it's trying to give the best to the average person within the city of Goodyear, wherever they live, trying to minimize the response times to them. It was the process that we went through in the optimization.
I'll hold off till later, but eventually, I want to tie in how it all rolled into these dates, so I'll pass it to whoever else.
I'm sure it's hard, because the circumstances are always different.
Yes.
There is a common, in most, you know, in whatever it is, but we have the automatic aid, and then we have the response time, and everybody's, you know, I think everybody cares about the person's life and their home and whatever it is. I think that's our goal. So, I think they're kind of clearing it up a little bit, that this is what we have to think about, is different responses. So, Sherry?
I've got more to tie up later, but I do have a question, a couple of questions on what Joe said, that kind of, when you looked at your modeling and you looked at your statistics, obviously, again, we kind of kept mobile out of the equation because they're their own separate entity, we know that. But we've got Australia that is very, I don't want to call it rural, because there's things up there, but we do not really connect in with the rest of the city. And when you looked at response times and you took your averages, did you average all the response times from all the stations to come up with that? Or did you take, you know, the south station separate and then the rest of the city? Did we have kind of two tracks, or was it all lumped into one?
There was one track in terms of we were trying to-
I guess that's kind of where my concern comes in. Because there's been a couple, and I brought them to the city manager's and the chief's attention, and it wasn't our fire department that, you know, did anything wrong. They weren't another call. But there were two incidents in the last year that I personally witnessed. One, I was leaving to go home, I live up there, okay, from Buckeye Road and Litchfield, right by the airport. As I'm driving home, I see an Avondale truck pass us. Of course, I pull over, like appropriately, but then, as I continue to go up the hill, I can see the lights. I see it turn. I see it go up the hill. I see it go past the high school, past the Safeway, past the high school. You know, at that point, that was a real concern. Obviously, whoever our backup was, wasn't there, and that's a really long response time. And then, we had another incident with a child at a football game, who our engine was doing other work, and apparently, there wasn't a backup close. So, when, that is my concern, when I look at this modeling, which the modeling leads to the timeframes, that obviously, I'm not happy with the timeframes to be pulled in once with you. I appreciate all your work, and I won't take this the wrong way, but-
We'll come onto the timeframes, I think.
Yeah, when I look at the timeframes, and I look at, like, incidents that really occur in real life, and then now hearing that it was all kind of put together with the rest of the city that is more compact, that is a concern.
Sure. And it's a concern in every area that we ever work in, and whether that's a massively urbanized area such as London, or it's a rural area such as New South Wales in Australia, where we're talking about hundreds of miles between towns. That same question is always there, and it's the hardest part of our work, to be honest, in many respects, is trying to address that. That balance between how many stations do we need to address the size of the population depends on how many incidents there are going to be there, and effectively, it's a question of risk. How tolerable do you want to be to that type of thing occurring? If you've got a community of 100 people who live 20 minutes from their nearest fire station, are they going to be serviced with an appropriate response time? No, you're not going to build a fire station for 100 people, or else you're going to have 1,000 stations across the area, whatever the number would be. And so, you know, it's a very difficult question. There's not a right answer to it. And what we, when we come on to recommendations and the timelines, we'll talk through that in a bit more detail. But I think what we're considering, the Australia-type area with the rest of the city, it's taking your approach of you want to be looking at it separately because it's a slightly different area. I understand that completely. But then, it's, at the moment, there is 1/6 of Goodyear's population is in that sort of southern region, and there are, well, actually, there are two fire stations in that area, but let's ignore mobile. So, there are five stations, 20% of the fire department resource are in that area to service 16% of the population. Now, that seems like a relatively fair balance in terms of how things stand, but accepting it has to be that kind of backup issue is the challenge, really, from where the resources might come in from. And so, when it comes to making decisions about what are priority areas, what we looked at was trying to say, well, if you have, effectively, the question comes down to, if you've got a couple of incidents that get a long response time in the Australia area versus 10 incidents that get quite a bit long response time in the northwest of the city, how do you balance that equation? And so, that's why, in effect, we took that straightforward approach of using the average, because it simply equally weights each location within the city in terms of how likely it is to generate an incident. And so, and there are pros and cons of doing that, certainly, but it does have sort of a very equitable approach to it. And so, unless you have a fire station on every corner, there are always going to be people who are better off than others in terms of the response times than they can expect.
It just seemed a little very skewed to me, that kind of skewed the survey.
I think, as I said, that sort of balance of how many incidents there are in that local area, how busy that engine company currently is compared to the other engine companies within the city, that's all part of the decision-making process that we went through.
Councilman O'St, dip?
Oh, I thought you were going to go to Joanne. The, if I understand the methodology correctly, you used the concept of reducing the, minimizing, let me use your words, minimizing the average response time. So, to break that down very simple for me, if the average response time is eight minutes right now, the goal is to reduce that. Is that, is that how you applied the model?
Well, depending on what, yes, effectively, yes.
So, effectively, I mean, just very broad, very simple, if we have, if today it's eight minutes, our goal was to get it less than that.
Yeah.
Which, and I understand, you know, the process. The thing that I'm having some trouble with is the national standards are based on response times. And the national standard response time is a minute of turnout and four minutes of response. So, it gives us five minutes. That's the national standard. That's what we want to hold ourselves up to. The valley benchmark, average response time for our entire valley, is five minutes and two seconds. So, if, if we've got those standards in place, I'm kind of struggling with Sherry on why we're not targeting that as opposed to just reducing from eight to seven, or from eight to six and a half, when we really should be shooting for five. Now, the flip side of that is fire station on every corner, but we didn't have any issue building a fire station for 60 people 100 miles from here. So, I only wish that we had taken that into consideration when we looked at the entire modeling process, because the, everything that we do is based on the national standards. And if the national standards guide us in one direction, then we should be, if we're talking about optimization, we should probably be striving for that, would be my guess. So, you know, and again, please don't take any offense to that, because I agree with Sherry, there is a big difference between getting there in nine minutes and getting there in six minutes, and there, and a big difference in getting there in four minutes as compared to six. And there's been a number of studies that have been done, and we talked about this back in February. The National Institute of Science and Technology did a report in Jan, I think they released it in February, but it was completed in January, that talked about the importance of response time. So, for us to kind of gloss over this, as though response times don't matter, I think is, it's not fair for us.
Madam Mayor, I don't think we're glossing over that point. I think what we're doing, when we looked at this study, is the system holistically. Yes, the city, as it's developed, has grown sometimes past our resources, and so, we are trying to best defend those resources now and try to project what we need for the future. We never took this as a potential to gloss over, to minimize what one area of the city had versus the other. What we said, when we looked holistically at the entire study, was my goal as the fire chief was trying to minimize and make sure that if we can get somebody there in two minutes, that's better than getting somebody there in six, eight, nine. But we also recognize that there are areas in the city that, you know, have grown past, again, past our resources. So, we're trying to balance that. I know it's not always the easiest of solutions to come up with, and I think certainly, as we've grown, we've kind of challenged ourselves to make sure that the resources are there. But again, we never glossed over this. This was a very high priority for us.
Well, the other thing, we're such an elongated area, you know, it's, we're a little basic south to north, north to south. I mean, we do have the west side, but really, it's a long distance, so I can understand the dilemma of it, to see where we are now from, from decisions made before us and our decisions, so it's been difficult. Yes, Sherry?
Chief, I just want to let you know that I don't think anybody here is thinking you're glossing off. I certainly don't. What I see is that-
Never took that as-
The resource issue, that's our job, and you clearly need more resources, and I think that's part two of tonight, is to figure out how to get you the resources, that you need to do your job the best you can.
I appreciate that.
And I think, you know, that's something that we do take seriously, and we really want to make sure you get what you need, because you guys do a great job.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Bill, there's some other ones, so.
I just want to respond to the comment.
Okay, right.
If I implied that you were intentionally glossing over that, that was not my, that was not my intent. My intent was to say to this council, we cannot lose sight of the fact that response times are important, that all this data and all this call activity is one set of data, but everything that the National Fire Protection Association, who sets our standards, says is based on response time. So, we can't lose sight of that, and we can't gloss over that, not you guys.
Yeah, I don't feel, I don't feel we're glossing over that. We don't want anybody to suffer. We don't want any, we want to protect the entire city. We have a problem here, the size of our city, and how it's elongated, and where people have gathered and purchased homes. So, we have to deal with that. And so, we have to deal also with the statistics. You make, you have to use those, to use them to make decisions, because if something really catastrophic happens in one area, and they actually had the numbers, but they weren't attended to because we got, you know, we decided personally, we want something here. So, it's, it is a problem. I mean, none of us want any of the neighborhoods to suffer, so we're going to try to find, I'm sure it's not going to be the all solution, because you both know what that takes, and we don't have the resources, but we're going to do the best that we can. Wally, you want to talk?
Well, I'm one of the council members that has personal experience with the 911 system, because in November, I called for my husband, and I live in Pebble Creek, and there is a fire station right outside my door, 185. It was 7:30 in the morning, and fire crew 181, who was housed out of 184, came to my door. Now, I don't know how long it took them, I didn't ask. It's 14 minutes by Google. It's six miles from me, so I really don't know. But they got there, and I was very grateful. And then, in November 20th of this year, I called, and 185 was tied up, and 183 came from the community park area. And if they come in my back door, they're two and a half miles from me, and if they come in the front door, they're three and a half miles. So, I don't know how long it took them to get there either. I just know they came as quickly as they could, and I was very happy to see them. So, my response time, very easily, on the November call, could have been five minutes, Bill, because they're coming from 183, I mean, sorry, 184 at Yuma Road, even if it is at 7:30 in the morning, because you've got the traffic and the congestion. And I just know our fire crews do the absolute best they can do, and you're right, we need more fire crews, and we need to be able to respond as quickly as possible. And while the national average is five minutes, I'm sure we made it, but I don't know, because I didn't ask, and I don't know how many of the folks we transport, the first thing we say to them is, how long did it take you to get to me? You know? But they're doing the best they can do, and it's a very serious matter, because in my, in my situation, time was of the essence both times.
I'm going to recognize Joe, do you have?
No, I agree with the response times as a focal point, and that's why I've been asking the questioning and waiting till we get all these pieces. But I also know that putting all these pieces together, or speeding any of these up when we get to those recommendations, requires a sizable amount of money, too, as well. So, when we get to there, I'm going to address those and ask some of those questions on how we can actually move that. My biggest concern, because of some of the growth that's going out west, and some of the growth that's going up the hill- of the growth that's going up the hill, that if one of those stations is, and that's why I asked for the risk assessment, if one of those stations is out of pocket, so to speak, the time getting there could be, you know, a life issue, life and death issue. And I also realize too that, you know, to build a fire station, put those things in, requires money as well. But the same token, I'm always looking for ways, and I, and we're going to probably be discussing it later, with some other options, to figure out a way of how we can potentially move that up. Because I, in my own mind, and again, your stats are probably fine, and, and again, it's not my area of expertise, with the 2022 and the 2025 just seem, based on what I saw, we took a, remember we took a tour out there at Taylor Morrison, but not that long ago? They've got ten years' worth of inventory out there, ten years, and they plan on going great guns as soon as they get their next plat in. So when I see the 2022 for the west and 2025 for up the hill, it, it doesn't logically make sense to me, okay? So I'm always going to be looking for ways to try to move those up based on what I've seen when I took the tour, and there's a lot of homes out there. And, and I think the response time from our station on the west side to get to some of those homes is pushing, what, eight, nine, 10 minutes, somewhere in that vicinity, Chief?
Now, the last time that we ran that and presented that to you guys, it was 6:53 for our average response time out to the west of Goodyear.
Out to far west?
Yep.
Okay.
And Joe, I agree with you, I think we're all concerned about this, and that's why we're here, and that's why the study was done, and that's why we're all, we're all geared to try to make a difference here, so.
But that's, you're saying seven minutes. For some reason, I thought it would be longer to get out there, but, okay, thanks.
Bill?
Well, first of all, the response time is never the firefighter's fault. They're responsible for the first minute, getting out, getting themselves from whatever it is that they're doing to the truck and getting going. But beyond that, it is really never the firefighter's fault. So yeah, our, our current staff is awesome at getting it, getting it done. But Wally, the situation that you just described is the redundancy that has, that allows multiple fire stations within closer proximity to one another to solve the response time problem. Our biggest issue is up in Estrella, they do not have that redundancy. So when that one station is busy, there is nobody else up there to do it, but maybe the busy Buckeye Valley Station at 326. And so this whole thing, and the, while these people picked homes there and they moved in there, we allowed it to happen. We have allowed growth to, to happen faster than we can service, than we can service it. So now we've got to figure out a way to take care of that. So I'm hopeful that collectively we'll come to it, but the numbers of calls is, is important, but so is the response time. And that was the whole point of my, of my comment to start, is they're equally important, and we can't talk about one without talking about the other.
So do you feel now you made your point and that
On that issue, yeah.
I can't, well, I can't, this is no consensus here, this is just talking, but you, I think you heard
Yes.
The comments and the concern on that.
Yes.
So Ken, where are we in this 523, where are we in your presentation that you want to talk? Is this?
Yeah.
Pardon me, should we move on a little bit?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Just cut one second, two seconds, just real quick.
All right, one second, I'm going, okay, you're done.
Well, just, just real quick, that's why I was talking, the risk assessment. He's, Bill, being a former firefighter, says it much more eloquently than I do, but that's why I asked for the risk assessment with Del, with specifically what Bill addressed. So, you know, that's what I was getting at when I was talking risk assessment, so. I just want to make sure it's clear.
I think we all agree, I think, and I appreciate you bringing all these points up because we need them brought up. Okay, Chief, you got it.
Okay, I'd just like to add one comment on this, and hopefully we'll get finished to move on a little bit. But I think the, we talk about the NFPA standards, with it within five minutes for the response time. The, the scope of the project that we were set was to develop a, a practical solution going forward, what it was defined, the best solution for the city of Goodyear. The NFPA response standards, they're sort of a gold standard, they're developed on sort of really densely urbanized areas, and they are something to aim for, don't get me wrong. But if we were looking to try and meet the ninety, ninety percent within five minutes, which is what the NFPA stipulates, the number of stations that we'd be putting forward in this report as a recommendation to meet the NFPA standards would be much more than having three new stations in the next nine years. It would be, we're talking more than doubling the number of stations in the next nine years. Now, we were tasked with providing a suitable set of recommendations for the city. We, in, part of the job was to consult about what would be appropriate. Trying to build seven, eight, nine new stations over the course of the next eight or nine years is not going to be an appropriate recommendation. And so what the report is trying to do is highlight the key priorities in terms of what we think is a feasible number of stations to be built. If there's an endless amount of money available, then you'd get a different set of recommendations. And of course, that, so the NFPA was part of our consideration when we were setting how we're going to do the optimization, but it could not be the sole focus because we would not be delivering a feasible approach at the end. And the other comment I just wanted to make is when we're talking about the years in terms of target years, they do say by 2025 and by 2022, that's not to say, they are almost listed as this is the last point at which this would be suitable to make a, a station available. And it's not saying in 2025, you have to open a station exactly in that year, it's saying there needs to be one by that point. If there is the opportunity to make one available before then, then that should not be ruled out by any stretch of imagination. That's not, the report is saying those are target years to have something definitely in place by, not you have to open it in that year specifically, opportunities that arise before then should be considered.
And that's where the council comes in.
Yes.
That's the policy, that's what we have to do. So we know what the problem is and we know what our, our charge is. So where are we at now on the presentation? Go ahead.
So just some of the analysis around the response components, we've talked quite a little bit, quite a bit about response over the, the last few minutes. But really, what all of the report is focused on, because of some data issues at the front end of the call in terms of the call handling, we were looking at the crew response element, which involves the crew turnout time and the time, travel time to scene, that gives us the crew response. And so those are the key elements that were the focus of the work. Over the course of the entire six-year period, we're talking about about a minute just under for crew turnout, and about five minutes in terms of the travel time element. And so approximately six minutes for crew response time, and around twenty minutes for actually time spent at scene. This analysis of the, the crew turnout by hour and by the different years of the sample is actually, it's about a, a reporting issue, and, and the new break-to-break policy introduced so that the 2014 and 15 data was the most representative. The times which are shown here are about one minute thirty at night for crew turnout, one minute during the day are very representative of, of a typical fire department, they benchmark well, there is little scope for making improvements there, there's very little variation by the individual stations as well, which really says that
So what you're saying, I'm going to interrupt you, so you don't have to public here, what you said is our, our fire department benchmark, keeps track of the figures and they're accurate, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Benchmark them and they, they work, okay, go ahead.
Compared to similar fire departments, they are similar levels of crew turnout. So there is little that can be done about that first minute, and that's a good standard to be aiming for, you're achieving that. And so the, the focus about trying to improve response times therefore has to be looking at the travel time element, so purely based on locations of incidents and where your stations should be related to that. We talked about response times, we looked at it for different instant types, we looked at it for all minutes and understanding how the, the profile worked, and of course, we looked at it by the different areas of the city as well, so understanding what the response times were like to all parts of the city in terms of how that, the system is currently performing, incorporating the responses that might be made from other departments into Goodyear and vice versa. Okay, so the next element of the, of the project was taking forward information from some of the analysis work, but also the population data that we had to be able to make the best predictions about future incident levels within the city of Goodyear. And there are three key factors that will be determining the level of, of future incidents within the city. The focus is on the EMS, emergency medical service calls, because they represent about over eighty percent of calls within Goodyear, they're the vast majority of the work attended by, by the fire department. They will continue to be, they're also the most susceptible to change in terms of population growth has much more of an impact on medical calls than does on fire calls, for instance. So the three key factors that can influence really where future demand would be are to do with the, the increasing population within the city, where we use the, the MAC data on that, the age profile and how that might be changing in the future because there are known correlations between age of communities and the expected calls for service, and the demand rate, which is simply the likelihood of, of people to call for service, something that varies over time and between communities as well. Those three elements really combined give us a, a way of making projections into the future. Now, they're of course in no way of knowing how accurate these are going to be until we get to the, the target years in hand. But again, we, we made sure we presented different options to department, discussed what we felt was the most appropriate based on our experience of working with, with similar-sized fire departments elsewhere. So this next slide summarizes the, the, those key elements and what might be happening in terms of the demand, and then we've got more detail about some of these parts of the process. So from 2015, when we had the most recent population data available, the projection is that the population will double or just more than double by the time we reach 2035. Not only that, we're expecting to see an aging of the population partly driven by the fact that there are quite a large number of people in that sort of thirty-five to fifty-five bracket now who in twenty years' time will be in the fifty-five to seventy-five bracket and therefore more likely to require medical assistance, but also due to the development of supported living communities and the types where there will be an influx of people in sort of fifty-five plus age range will mean that there is a greater proportion of elderly people within the city of Goodyear. And we also looked at how the demand rate, the likelihood is to call might go forward over the future using our own information there. So a little bit more detail on those three elements. Projecting the, the population change, I said more than doubles over the, the twenty-year timeframe that we looked at, but that's not evenly distributed in terms of where the additional information, additional population would be. In the north, it's already fairly well built up so that growth is limited compared to elsewhere, but it'd still be a forty percent increase by 2035. In the, the central region, so between I-10 and Gila River, it would double, but in the south, we see a much greater percentage-wise increase in, in the population. And so I said, in response to an earlier question, there's currently seventeen percent of the population are in the south region, by 2020, it's eighteen percent, and then it gradually builds up so that by 2035, it'd be nearly a third of the city would be living in, in the southern section there. So that represents a, a change in the geography of the population. I'll just quickly go through the next couple of slides. But I said that the age profile changes as well as we go through the years with more people, so the proportion over sixty-five grows quite substantially. We looked at the, so the, the demand rate, see how that compared to other cities within the local area, what do we think is going to happen in terms of how likely people are to be calling. At the moment, the, the rate of people calling for medical calls in, in Goodyear is almost identical to the, the countrywide level of calls, which is quite an interesting statistic in itself. It's below the rate in some of the other comparators that we've, we've used there, but there are reasons behind that. Tempe, for example, has ASU and the population there says one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, but there are forty or fifty thousand students there swelling that population, so that rate is, is not necessarily a fair reflection. Other areas might have a more elderly population to start with, which changes the, the overall rate. So this is the result in terms of the EMS demand projection by area, the purple line showing the overall number of medical calls across the city, and then the, the three individual lines for different regions. We can see that as we go forward into the future, the increase is sharpest in, in the south region, but it would still be, expected number of calls would be lower than even the north or the central parts of the city. And that's reflected somewhat in, in these maps as well, where this is using the traffic analysis zones where we have reliable population data for, and showing the position from 2015 in terms of number of medical calls to 2035. And while we do see growth in the south, there are also key areas in, in the west of the city and indeed in the central parts around some of the current stations where because of the aging of the population, because of the infill of where development is going to be happening, it would be that demand is going to increase everywhere. And so that's reflected in that map, and so when it comes to looking at the optimization, we're making sure that we've got that overall projected demand in the, in the model. We looked at it as well for the non-EMS calls, I said that's only sort of around fifteen percent of the, the incidents that do, get responded to by, by the fire department. It's been very consistent over the, the six years of data that we had in terms of the total number of calls. So we established a fairly conservative approach that it would just increase in line with population, not going through quite the detail that we did for the medical calls because in terms of the, the grand scheme of where demand is going to be placed, it's going to be the medical that's really going to be driving that. And by 2035, medical calls will be ninety percent or more probably of the incidents attended by the fire department. Okay, so that was a, a quick run-through of the projection approach, any questions on that?
I think we're good, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So the next section, I'm going to discuss what we mean by modeling and give a, a quick overview about the different types of modeling that we have done during this project, how that effectively aids the decision-making that we're going to be doing, and then how we actually set up the model, in this case specifically for the, the Goodyear Fire Department. So simulation and optimization, we have two types of modeling, R30. Simple clip art demonstrating effect, but really what we mean by modeling is, is developing a computer-based system to be able to model a, a real-world system. And you always have to make some specifications in that process, you can't have every single element modeled there. But this is what we've been doing as a company for thirty years, is building models of emergency response agencies. And so we're very adept at, at that and understanding how different models, how the models that we have need to be individually tailored for each of the departments that we, we work for. And we effectively build a simulation model, it is the full representation of the service, which has all different elements in there and is the closest representation we can build. But we also have an optimization model that focuses on locations and, and helps us pick the, the optimal sites given different criteria that we're faced with. So a very simplistic overview of what simulation modeling is, but just in this example here, and this is how the model works, but on a, a grander scale within the model where we've got many more stations and many more incidents occurring, the model is exactly the question asked about, does it take into account what happens if a vehicle is unavailable? Yes, it does. So if an, an incident occurs in one part of the city, we would send, the model, as would happen in real life, would send the nearest appropriate response to that incident. And it goes there. If something else happens nearby, that's, the engine is now unavailable, and so we send the response in the remaining station with the available nearest resource. And it's not just necessarily one engine going, we are sending whatever the appropriate level of responses based on what we've analyzed from the, the fire service data to make sure that every incident gets an appropriate response. So whether it's three engines, one ladder, and one battalion chief, if that's what's required, that would be what's reflected within the model. And when we're running this, we're running a simulation over many, many years to make sure that all the variation that happens on a day-to-day basis gets captured. So there are days, we saw the, how the profile looks by hour, but there'll be days when that peaks at seven o'clock in the morning for some reason. And so you don't just run one day at the same time, you let all of the natural variation occur so that when you're looking at the, the simulating what happens, so sometimes there'll be simultaneous incidents, sometimes there'll be a four-hour period when a risen incident's at all. Sometimes there'll be times when your vehicles are being called more often to your neighbors. And so we run the model for a long period of time to make sure that all of that natural variation is captured within there. So that's a, a quick introduction to simulation modeling. I could do a two-hour talk on simulation modeling alone, but I think that's probably not appropriate for today. So moving on to optimization and why we want to use a highly-developed computer model to be able to look at optimization, I bring a I bring a very simple example here of what an optimization question might be. If we had a city that had 10 north-to-south and 10 east-to-west roads giving us 100 intersections, those could be considered as 100 potential locations for placing a fire station on. Now, if we've got one fire station, clearly there is just 100 possibilities in that area to choose. If it comes to choosing two fire stations, though, the actual number of pairs of stations that can be chosen is nearly 5,000. Different pairs could be chosen of those 100 intersections. When it comes to three, 160,000 different ways of choosing three out of 100 sites. Choosing 10, the number's 17 trillion or 17 million-million, depending on how you want to say that large number. That becomes impossible to do the computational assessing every single option of 17 trillion. And in fact, the question here is much larger because you don't just have 10 north-by-south roads. We've got more than that, and so many, many more points to be considering. So the question, the number of possibilities becomes much larger, and therefore our optimization model doesn't try to assess every single option because there are many which can be cut out immediately, uses a very technical algorithm to be able to assess, based on the criteria, to be able to choose an option that is most appropriate, tested, run many times, and made sure that what we're doing is robust given the question in hand. So that's a quick introduction to the simulation optimization models that we were using. Quick screenshot of the model, so everything that we have been doing the analysis on, so the numbers, where, when, how many, what type, what type of vehicles go, et cetera, all of that information is fed in to the simulation model. And then the next stage is for us to make sure that what the computer model is reporting is the same as what's being reported in real life. So for all of the different incident types, we compare what the modeled response times are with what was actually analyzed as occurring. So we have our computer model, which is fed with the data that we've done, it's fed with travel times for the area, and then we run the model, run it for a number of years to make sure that we've got a stable period and make sure we've got an accurate match in terms of the response times that are coming out of the model to the real-life response times, and also in terms of the workload. So is each of the individual companies doing the correct amount of work in the model as they are in real life? And in this case, in terms of both the response times that we've shown, the workload, and the different areas of the city, that reflects very well against the map that we showed earlier for analyzed response times, we have a good match between the analyzed position and the modeled position, which means when we go on to be looking at different options in the future, we've got confidence in what we're saying. If we make a change in the model, we'd expect that change to be reflected in real life where it's to be implemented.
Excuse me, Sherry, sorry.
I just have a question on the modeling, and I might have missed it in here. Did we also take in consideration, I know we don't have a lot of cars, calls on Litchfield Park, but was that figured in as well?
Yes.
Because I saw some of the dots out there, I wasn't sure if that's what that was.
Bill?
Can you go back one slide, please? I don't know if you guys call this over in the UK, but to me, this is a heat map.
Yeah.
Just making sure we're the same terminology. So the blue areas represent the shortest response time, which we would, I think, normally come to, we would assume that would be closest to the fire station.
I'd say.
The challenge that I think in graphically displaying the heat map for the entire city is it takes away from where exactly is that? We see this big red area, we see these blue areas, we see a little yellow area, which is nine to 11 minutes, which I think is that the location for the western fire station, if I've got that the way I'm reading that. So I think you're in the 11-minute response time out there. If we go back to a previous one, and I won't bother with that, but, you know, if you look at where all the red is on this map, that is the South Australia area for us. And I realize the, and I'm, I'll probably just say it, I'm going to say, I'm going to say it one more time, but I'm sure I'm going to say it at least three more times, that not putting the Australia Station as the number-one priority, pushing that out to 2025, based solely on this map, and given the discussion that we had about redundancy, and you talked about it in your optimization 100-square grid issue, the more we add, the better choice, the better, the better coverage we have, just doesn't make any sense. And I know you're getting, you're getting to that, but if you look at where all this red is, and we know where the development is going, and we know what we're approving, we have, we have an obligation to get a fire station down in that particular area. The little bit of yellow that's coming in, you know, when you look at everything else that you factored so far, the aging population, what's going on, we had a long discussion about Australia when it was being built, and in 2001, when I got here, there was, we had produced a map that showed 19 fire stations in this city.
When you joined the fire department?
When I joined the fire department in 2001, we had a map that showed 19 fire stations. Yeah, that was, that was, that was the optimal, that was the optimal coverage for this, for the city of this geographic size, not of this population, but of this geography. And we had also encouraged that as the development was coming in, that we were getting fire stations in those particular areas, and that has since stopped the Great Recession and all the, you know, chaos of the economy. But here we, so I'm taken back a little bit by, we didn't provide you with all the information because it would have been too expensive. I would like to know where our gaps are. I know I have five fire stations right now, you're telling me I need two more, but if you really say we need five more, then we ought to know that. We ought to know where we're putting houses in this community, and we ought to know that we're sending them outside of an optimal response area so that we can at least inform the people who are buying the homes, hey, you're going to be outside of our response area. We're not telling them that, we're selling them all on the city of Goodyear, and we heard, I've heard this from my fellow council members, we bought Mobile, we need to service it. Well, you know what? People are buying Goodyear, and we need to service it. So help me to understand, and I'm getting very emotional about this because I'm, there's conflicts between the models and the national standards and all the benchmarks that are being used about distance and time, and I'm trying to get my head around that, but this one map tells a huge story when it comes to where, how we're serving our residents and where they're living. And to see that more graphically displayed in a closer-up version, I think would really tell a much different story to this council than that particular map does right now. Because right now, that just looks like, wow, that's really far south. But where is far south? Because on the map, I can't tell you where Willis Road is, I can't tell you where the rest of that stuff is, but oh, look at that.
Here where the cursor is, is Willis as it intersects with Australia Parkway here. So it is the area that's south of that, that is the extreme response time, so the 11 to 12 minutes.
Now granted, we don't even be living out there yet, but we do have people living at Willis and Australia Parkway.
Yes.
And we're allowing development to continue to go down there, so.
Bill, I'm going to ask you to close your comments because we need to get on, and there's other people maybe on the council on our talks, so, Joanne?
Thank you. I just, I guess I need to know the process for this evening because I've been quiet, which is rare for me, because I will go on, and this is an emotional discussion, and I have a lot to say, and I'm listening. So if we have to be done here in 10 minutes, are we coming back? Because I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I'm watching the clock, in about five minutes, I was going to tell you that we're going, we're going to come back after the council meeting.
Thank you.
And no, I would not, this is not the time to walk out on this, I don't think any of us, and we have gotten a little long in tooth on some of these and repetitive. I think we're fully aware of the emergency side of it and how we feel, and it's real hard when you think of humans versus statistics. And that's where we're at, and that's difficult, and it's difficult for us to swallow, and it's difficult for the public to swallow. So we're here, we're going to finish it. So it's 10:02, so I'm thinking we're pretty close to taking a break.
Yeah, I would recommend that at that point, Madam Mayor, just because the next step for us is to talk about the modeling that occurred at Station 181, so that's going to be a lot of discussion, so I would rather do that after though.
Technically, I'm going to recess this meeting, and I'll reconvene it following our regular meeting. Everybody can go back up.
Can we leave this up there then?
Fine. Would you like a 10-minute break?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that'd be nice. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then we'll have a 10-minute break, and we'll be back at the dot. Now going to reconvene the work session. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we've talked about a lot so far tonight, and we're at the point now where we're actually start talking about fire stations. So the next part for us would be to talk about 181.
Okay, is this working?
Yep.
Yes, excellent. Okay, so going straight into Station 181, in terms of the local areas, important to point out how close the station is located to the eastern border of the city of Goodyear, so very close to Evendale. That has an impact in terms of not only the number of responses that Station 181 is doing into other cities, but it also means that there will be counter to that responses from other cities into that area. So sort of the location isn't just tied up with itself, it's joined together with where the other Goodyear Fire Department stations are in the local area and also with the neighboring department as well. So in terms of what we looked at for the modeling for Station 181, there were, in effect, a few different options that we considered. At the moment, as we know, that the building is in a state of disrepair, which means it's not, it's not possible to locate any engines or the ladder and the ladder truck company at the station. So that was why this was sort of the first area of modeling that we went on to look at, having completed the analysis and validation stages that we talked about before the break. So in terms of what we assessed, we assessed keeping the station at the current site, what would happen if the station remained closed, looking at a proposed option for basing the station effectively where we are now, as put forward to us by the department, and then we also used optimization modeling to identify where the optimal location would be if we could choose to place the site anywhere, and we're working around that option as well. As briefly discussed earlier, there are two approaches that we took for optimization, either minimizing average response times or maximizing the percentage in five minutes. And I will show now sort of the optimal locations that are derived from the, from that calculation in using the two different approaches. What is the best location, assuming that all other stations in the city remain at their current sites? Where would we optimally locate Station 181? So this first map is showing the, what we call a site search map, the hotspot area for the best locations to place a new station. And Steve, the current site is in gray, 181, that's the southern of the three squares shown on the map. The purple site is where we are sat today, and the red square is the actual sort of theoretical optimal location at which to place a new station on sort of the intersection with I-10, and the red areas are the best locations to place the site using that calculation. And if we instead use the approach of maximizing the percentage of incidents met inside five minutes, we'd get a very similar-looking map, which wouldn't always be the case if we use different optimization approaches. But in this, in this question, we are getting similar answers, but really what we're saying is that the optimal site is approximately a mile or so to the north of the current Station 181, somewhere on Litchfield, between Van Buren and the I-10. So those are the strongest options. The current site is shown to be in a sort of poor-to-average area, and where we are now would be a good site based on the optimization techniques using either percentage in five or minimizing the average. So we took those different options that were there and used our full simulation model to have a look at what the impacts would be on the response times within the whole of the city of Goodyear. We see that closing the station has a negative impact on performance. The optimal site, as shown on the previous map, would have the biggest improvement on response times, but it would also be significant gains if we located the station somewhere within the Goodyear Municipal Complex, abbreviated GMC throughout here. So there would be gains that could be achievable on land that is already owned by the city. And just to indicate what that would look like in terms of a map, the next slide shows the expected change in the response times, where Station 181 to be sort of instantaneously relocated from where it is now to where we are sat at GMC. See, there is now a slightly larger dark-blue area in terms of the best response times that can be achieved, and that's because we've moved the station from right on the extremity of the border with Evendale, slightly to the north, slightly to the west, it provides a greater coverage to where the incidents are located within that local area. So the recommendation really from our side coming out of that, it would be that the station should be relocated somewhere to the north of the current site. Optimally, it would be very close to the Litchfield and I-10 junction, but anywhere sort of within that vicinity would give significant performance gains to the city based on the change of location.
I'm going to stop right here. Councilman Stip?
Can you go back? Go back one more. Okay, so let me, I've got two questions, and I'm trying to understand this, so I, this particular map is used, you've graphed what a five-minute response time would look like.
No, no, this map is showing something completely different to the previous ones, we're showing similar colors. So I will explain exactly what this is showing to clarify that.
Yeah, because I was, I got lost as soon as we got to this point, and then it was all over.
That's fine. So this map is, what we have done here is we have used the optimization model in a slightly different format, and we've effectively tested lots and lots and lots of individual locations for moving 181 to. So what we've done is effectively fix every other station, we pick up 181, and we place it on all of the different points within this area of Goodyear, and then this, we get a score out of the model for then what that means in terms of expected response times, and this is showing how good this, all of the sites are in terms of, as a potential for locating the replacement for 181, with a red area being the best scores and blue areas being the worst scores.
The best area to locate it to, and I don't want to put words in my mouth, so to achieve a five-minute response time?
Yes, in this second map, to achieve a five-minute response time, where is the best area to locate it, and in the first map to produce the best average response times, and you get a very similar answer, however we set about doing the optimization in this case.
Okay, so if, and the response time is based on, if I've tracked this correctly, is based on the call history?
Yes.
So if, using this, this picture that you have up right now, just for the sake of the example, this is based on the current call history, what we've experienced so far?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So if a large residential development were to go in...
where we're expecting development to occur is still very similar, it's still in that, if not the exact same point, it's still really highlighting the same area, that intersection between Litchfield and Van Buren as being the optimal area. And then it becomes a question of availability of land as to where the, what happens as to the exact, precise optimal. But say that future modeling that we'll come on to, when we're looking at the 2025 and the 2035 demand rates, then we still see a very similar location, if not exactly on that point, definitely within sort of that quarter-to-a-mile zone around that area.
Okay, so basically what you've said, and I think it, and I know you've said it in the report, that there is essentially little difference between the red optimal and the purple proposed at the GMC.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Campbell?
I have a question of the city manager. I understand what they're proposing and from day one I have been in favor of demolishing 181 and building a new one because it's unrepairable. However, if we, as a council, do we have the option of where to place it? Or because it is coming back in the study, we're going to be limited to their recommendation? I'd like a little clarification on that if I might have that, please.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, it will be, the recommendation is be in this general area.
Okay.
So what we would have to look at if the direction of council is to go forward with, not going back to Station 181, it would be looking at trying to find a site within this general area. We know what the optimal sites are, but as was stated, anywhere really, and I don't want to put words in the, in your mouth, but along the Van Buren, Litchfield areas would work. And also, if I can lead you a little bit as far as what that means for the, the one that would be at the Goodyear Municipal Complex, and maybe you're going to get to that as well in your presentation. So the, where, the Goodyear Municipal Complex, right here?
Yes.
You had modeled that as well and while you said it was good, it's, it's not the best.
Yes, that's correct.
But generally, what you're saying is along Van Buren and also on Litchfield Road, up to I-10, anywhere really in there, and that's where we can find an available site.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Bazillo?
Just for the, for the general public out there, when the, one we're referring to right now is kind of torn apart, had some issues and we had, need money to either fix it if we don't relocate. So with that being said, is there about, if I recall right, about $1.2 million set aside for that renovation?
Yes, that's correct. There's $1.2 million in the CIP set aside for that, yes.
Okay, so if we were looking to come up with a new building, that can be reallocated, but yeah, my concern's always been at that because I took a tour of that site. Really, can you really revitalize that for 1.2 anyway? Because it's, it needs a lot of work as a, as a result of some of the issues, health issues they found inside that fire station. So just for the general public, they may not know that the one there is not viable right now, it's going to have to be rehabbed anyway, and you've got $1.2 million set aside for it, assuming you can do it for 1.2. So just for a point, just to make sure I get that out there.
All right, sure, I've got it down here, Wally. Councilman Campbell, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
I had two questions.
Oh, all right, go.
I thought you said me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Is it okay?
Joanne, yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Vice Mayor, go.
I had two questions. One, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right.
In your microphone, please.
Let's try this.
With the maximum, maximum percent in five, that's, you're looking at an optimal site within a five-minute response time for this map when we're looking to put the stations.
Yes, but effectively saying what site would give us the most instance within five minutes travel, uh, response time.
So that is a standard for your optimal station placement, is that correct?
Yes.
And now, this question I think is more for the city manager. Obviously, I think we're all on the page from what it sounds like that 181 needs to be moved. What we have is not going to be workable. 181 was very close to the airport and with the Lux Air opening, are we going to be looking to get a back way or another way into that airport that would be closer with more planes coming in with a new Lux Air facility?
So Chief, you have a, an option to enter in off of Yuma now?
Yeah.
Do you want to go through that, please?
Yes, we, we've been in discussions with the fixed-based operator over there that, you know, as time progresses and as more aircraft come in, we would like more options of getting on the airport property. So whether it's through the north gate or eventually if they ever develop a west gate, we would want those options made available to us. And they were on board with that during that discussion.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so it's on this side, Councilman Campbell?
No, it's, yeah, it's Joanne.
Joanne was first, all right.
Actually, my.
Osborne, go ahead.
Thank you. My question's more for the city manager. I, I agree that 181 has seen its time. And I, and I believe that we'll all be discussing on where is the optimal place for it to be, be replaced. But I, just out of curiosity, for the future of that area, of where that station is, is this, and, and we do have some money set aside, and I'm not, I'm not asking for us to rebuild that station, but is there not some kind of insurance on that building that for the future we could say, I mean, when you have, when you have some kind of thing that happens in your building or in your home or, or things like that, that, that is a detriment to it, you have a claim? And so I was just curious as to why that didn't work here? Maybe that's something different for government, and I just don't understand that. But, you know, I would have been thinking that with my own building, this is a sick building, what's wrong with it? And do you have coverage over things like that? So I'm just, that's, you know, that's why I directed you, because that really has nothing to do with the study. So I'm just curious as to how that, that works. And if you don't have an answer now, that's something you can tell me later, but.
Well, I don't have an answer right now. I would say, that was what, finished in '92, so obviously it's, it's been in place for many, many years. So we, I, we have not, I'm not aware if we've looked into are there any claims or, that might be an opportunity for us or not? I'm, I'm not aware of that, but we can certainly let you know, we can talk to our risk manager.
And, and like I said, it's not that I want that to be a fire station. No, I'm just saying, for the future of whatever is there, I would just be interested to, to see, what do you do with something like that? So.
I'm assuming it's like when you get old and you have to have something replaced, you pay for it.
Maybe it is. Maybe it is, you know? That's, that's, I'm just, like I said, I'm just asking the question because I'm curious how it works.
I just thought I had.
I'm not sure we have homeowners insurance.
Councilman Campbell?
I don't think we have homeowners insurance on our fire stations. I'd love it, but we probably couldn't afford the premium.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
Okay, so the next section of the modeling that we looked at was, and when we talked before, that the recess about how demand was going to grow within a city, we wanted to look at what impacts that future level of demand would have on the response times and on the workload of the vehicles operated here in Goodyear. So this is really saying what would happen to our level of performance if we did nothing in terms of our station locations, with the idea that 181 could somehow be reinstated, but trying to understand what impact increased demand is having on, on response times. So in order to do that, we looked at three planning scenarios, 2020, 2025, and 2035. We provided detailed level results for all of those options, but in terms of what we're going to talk about here, we'll just focus on 2025, it's in the middle, and it gives us an idea of what's going to be happening. So we want to really understand, yeah, how increased demand is going to affect performance. And so this first slide is showing the response summary, so we can look at the different measures, percentage met inside five minutes, all the average response times. And as we move to 2025, if nothing is done in terms of the locations, we would see deterioration across the board in terms of response times in all areas of the city and at all of the different measures that we've looked at in terms of this report. And we also see quite substantial rises in the level of workload for each of the engine companies, ladder companies operated by the department. In terms of the response time, the map on the left is what can be achieved in, in 2020, what, sorry, the map on the left is, is the current position, so where we, the previous, the slide we finished up on before the recess, so the modeled coverage of the city in terms of the response times in 2015. On the right is the map of where things would be in terms of response times in 2025. And while we see more red areas, what's also noticeable is that in the northern parts of the city, those dark blue areas have disappeared because although we still got stations in the same sites in the, in the northern parts of the city, because the workload has increased, because the vehicles are more likely to be on a call when the next call comes in, we don't get many areas where we'd expect to get an average response time always within that nought to five-minute range. So there are two sort of different stories here, only an increase in the amount of red area that's appearing, but also fewer parts of the city now getting response inside five minutes on average. This map was, again, sort of tries to highlight that in a different way. This is where we are projecting forward where demand is likely to occur and seeing whether we can get a response there inside five minutes or not. And there are now large parts of the city where we can see these responses outside of five minutes, certainly in the western parts of, of Goodyear, south of I-10, even in extreme northwest, and then also in, in the south of the city. So it's not, when we look towards 2025, there are response time issues across the city. It's not just in little pockets, it's really across the whole area. So we charted how effectively we would see in, with increased demand, a deterioration in performance by the different areas. And effectively, what we're seeing is a steady decline as we move from 2015 to 2035, a deterioration in the response times that can be achieved across the city. And there's a lot of information you could draw from this graph, but certainly the sort of, the times for the, sort of the longest 10% of responses, that those worst responses would certainly be significantly worse by the time we reach 2035 if nothing was done about station locations. Now, and final point before I summarize that section, really, it'd also be by the time we go forward into the future, there's going to be an increased reliance on responses by your neighboring fire departments into the city because the demand has increased within Goodyear, so more resources are going to be required to come in from, from your neighbors. That's a very quick run-through, but what it clearly shows is that if nothing is done in terms of station locations, then the response times are going to suffer across the whole city, in the south, in the north, in the west, every part would be affected by the increase in response times. And that really then links up with what we need to be doing into the future about identifying future station locations.
Pause here, Madam Mayor, for any questions that council may have on the previous slides.
Any questions? No, I think they're ready to go on.
Awesome.
Okay, so this next section is about trying to consider where we need to be adding in station locations in order to make the most improvement to response times across Goodyear, drawing on the information we've already shown about projections of demand levels and what influence that's going to have on, on response times. So as I said in, in the first part of the presentation, of course, there was a great, as well as this technical side, we, we made sure we consulted with the members of the department and based on the, the current condition of the stations and that they're, they're fit for purpose, as it were, we proceeded with the assumption that all of the current sites except for 181 should be fixed within the, in, in the future because of the condition of the stations. And that was a major step in terms of taking forward the, the next planning levels. So with those sites fixed, we then looked to be seeking optimal locations around those. And we did that based on three different planning horizons, so sort of where we are today, called 2015, because that's where we had the demand information up to, but effectively where we are now, looking 10 years into the future and 20 years into the future in terms of where the demand is going to be across the city. The reason we did that is that we wanted to try and see what we can immediately be doing about trying to improve the response times, so looking at the 2015 demand. And what we could be doing, if you're taking a long-term strategy in terms of planning, we want to be making sure, want to be looking at where we'd optimally place stations in, in the future. So we did the three different scenarios individually so that we could then put those together to, to draw some firm conclusions. You don't want to be making a change to your station locations now that would be counterintuitive in 10 years' time. What you want to be doing is trying to find new sites in, in a sort of progressive manner so that there isn't any, you know, there's no conflict in terms of what you're trying to do in the short term, would not be good in the long term, that would be counter, counterproductive. So we, we ran the optimization for those three different planning horizons to make sure that we could then start to draw some, some firm conclusions. So in each case, for the three different planning horizons, we fixed the, the current station sites except for 181, and we optimized to try and minimize the average response times to, to the instance. And what we did is we looked for the best one, two, three, or four additional sites around those fixed locations. So this first set of maps is based on the 2015 level of demand. Where would we first place a station to improve the response times in, in the most achievement we could do? It would be to, because 181 is closed, the first thing we'd do is build a new station, 181, at the optimal site that we've been discussing previously. And the second thing would be to go to west Goodyear and we'd see as we add in more, they're all in the northern part of the city. So yeah, based on where the demand currently is for calls, for the fire departments, if you add in four new stations, they would all be in the northern parts of the city to give the greatest improvement to the instance and their average response time across the entire city. That's where, based on where calls are currently occurring. Next set of graphs considers the, the 2025 position. Again, the first thing to do would be to fill in the closed 181 and then go into west Goodyear. And it's only, and then by the time we're adding in four stations, then there would be a, a site in the south of the city. But when we go to the 2035 position, the first change is actually to look at the west Goodyear, then to go into the south, then to fill in the north, and then another site towards the southern part of the city as well. So there's a different progression in each of those planning horizons. 2015, more focus on the north, 2025, west and north, and then 2035, the south gets greater importance going forward. So we can draw some conclusions from that. Current demand, it would be, as I said, solely focused around sort of the area around the I-10. In all of the three planning horizons, the, a site in west Goodyear i- is suggested as an additional location in the first one or two sites every time. And it's sort of in 2025 and 2035, the south city is given greater importance there going forward. And so we can draw some conclusions from that. Current demand, it would be, as I said, solely focused around sort of the area around the I-10. In all of the three planning horizons, the, a site in west Goodyear i- is suggested as an additional location in the first one or two sites every time. And it's sort of in 2025 and 2035, the south city is given greater importance there going forward. And so while they, we're showing a different progression in each case, there's enough information there, we felt that we could actually start to put forward an optimal strategy going forward. And so as I said, these maps are all really based on the sort of pure mathematics of where to locate stations to make the most improvement to average response times. And then it was the next step, which we'll come on to, is how we draw that information together to develop a suitable solution from that information.
Speaker, pause. Yes.
Councilman Laura, Vice Mayor Laura Tano.
Okay, I guess I'm a little getting kind of mixed single, signals from the presentation. When we were looking at the optimization for the station, we were using a five-minute response time for 181. Because as I said, that's kind of the.
Sorry, do you mind if I interrupt? Sorry.
Let, let me finish and then, and then you can interrupt, because this is, this is my concern, at least this is how it sounds, okay? That, that's kind of the optimization. We all know that one needs to be moved and, and we've got, I've got, I've got that personally. But when I, then I look at the station placement for the. response plan for one eighty one, because as I said, that's kind of the...
Sorry, do you mind if I interrupt? Sorry.
Let me finish, and then you can interrupt, because this is my concern, at least this is how it sounds, okay? That's kind of the optimization. We all know that one needs to be moved, and we've got, I've got that personally. But when I, then I look at the station placement for the optimization for the rest of the city, including South Goodyear, which is the Austraea Station, if we're already not meeting the five-minute goal, and I would assume any growth would make it longer rather than shorter, I don't see how that can wait with your plan that you have presented there, you know, ten years plus, if we're not meeting the goal now, and that's the same goal that we use for the optimization. It does seem a little bipolar to me when I'm looking at those two things, that's how it sounds.
Okay. So the optimization of station one eighty one, we showed two maps there. One was based on minimizing average response time within the city, and one was based on maximizing the number of instances met in five minutes. And in that example, there were two very similar maps. So however you choose to relocate station one eighty one, whichever optimization approach you would take, you would get a very, very similar answer that it is saying around that Litzfield Van Buren intersection as being the main answer. The fact that it comes up using both approaches is a real, it's endorsing itself really, considering average, which we think is the sort of fairest citywide approach, or focusing on that five-minute response time, irrespective, it comes up in the same place. So that is really a strong answer for station one eighty one as to where it should optimally be located. Coming on to the, this citywide position, again, all of this optimization on those previous sets of maps is about minimizing the average response time. When we, before the recess, we, I said that the scope of the work was to develop a feasible solution for the city, and that if we were looking at the five-minute response time across the whole city as the sort of the gold standard, taking a NFPA standard and applying that, then what we'd be sitting here talking about now would be a plan of around fourteen stations by twenty twenty five. In consultation with the fire department, we felt that what we should be looking at was to achieve something that could actually be put in place, that the building of seven or eight new stations by twenty twenty five would not be a feasible recommendation to be coming to city council with, and that's why the rest of the optimization work was looking at minimizing average response times so that we could put something together that would develop a feasible solution and not one that was, yeah, seven or eight new stations in that many years.
And I get that we're looking at the big picture, but when we're looking at the way we're kind of rating one area as opposed to another area of the community, we know we're not making our times in the second area, and we're only going to be adding houses. So I, that's where I'm having a problem with South Goodyear. We know it's only going to grow, it's not going to shrink, and if we're not meeting those metrics now, I don't see how later, it's going to get worse, it's not going to get better. I guess that's my concern.
And I understand that, and that would be the same in West Goodyear as well, though. We saw the response times there aren't met inside the five-minute standard certainly. And so that's one of the things coming out of those optimization maps is that West Goodyear is sort of after the relocation of one eighty one comes out as the next priority because that's where, based on the data we received about the planned developments, that that's where there were going to be more, there are already more residents there than there are in the south, and it's going to grow at an equal pace, if not greater pace, in the next five to ten years before the south then sort of takes over again later on. And so that, the balance between one part of the city and another part of the city is always a very challenging question. And so those maps are purely based on the mathematics of what is expected to be the development there and what would be the average response times to those locations.
And I get that, and I don't mean to cross-examine you on that issue, it's just, it seems to me when I'm looking at different stations that we're not using the same standard for the application of the response times, and I think that's the big concern with this council is the response times. That's what I've been hearing, so.
Yes, yep.
Okay. Councilman Osborne?
I'll go first, sorry. And I thoroughly respect what Vice Mayor Loretano is saying, especially the response times. And I was going to wait to say all this at the end, but, you know, the mayor and I sit on the board of the hospital, and we hear how timeliness is crucial and critical. You know, when you talk about strokes, when you talk about brain injuries, when you talk about, there is a timeline specific. And that up in Austraea is, one of the issues is timeliness, but the other issue for me with Austraea is, quite frankly, and this is, I, as a business person, this really frustrates me because I'm always looking for a solution and understanding, and sometimes the system doesn't allow for the solutions in my mind that I want to put together. But I think that the fact that there's not adequate backup and a contingency plan to execute delivery for the residents of Austraea when that one fire station is already busy somewhere else, you know, trying to get people up the hill is difficult. Where I respect West Goodyear's issue, you're telling us right here, you know, the population of homes and potential growth in West Goodyear are just as important, and they are. I mean, public safety is number one in my mind for our city and for our citizens. But there's backup, and that's what gets me, there's still backup there. Now, all the stations are busy, but we still have, you know, that whole part of our system of automatic aid helps, you know, somewhat work together. And so in Austraea, it's still an issue of backup, and so that's part of where I can't get over is, you know, I understand relocating one eighty one, I understand the concern over West Goodyear, and we have a lot of really tough decisions to make here, on top of the fact that, you know, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're basing this all on the current financial plan that we have. And so, correct, is that correct, the current CIP, the current?
No.
Then help me with that part.
Sure.
Because I thought you said that if, say, money was no object, you would say, oh, there'd be fourteen other stations. So maybe I misunderstood that.
Councilmember Osborne, I think our approach was to try to be as pragmatic as possible, understanding what the limitations of the city are. So if we did come with a report, as Graham, excuse me, Graham said to you, if we came with a report that recommended fourteen stations, it would be looked at as like, are you crazy? So we wanted to give a very pragmatic but also a solution-based report. We didn't want to come into this meeting today and just seem like we were way out in that field. We wanted something that we could, that was achievable for our city, and make sure that we are taking many different factors into account. And I think, you know, from Graham's standpoint, as they developed the modeling for this, it wasn't just the response times, there's seven other, six other factors that really kind of play into how that model is developed, and it's just such an integral math equation that sometimes it's hard to explain every integral piece of that. But we've looked at this, you know, in my mind at least, seven ways from Sunday to make sure that we are putting forth a study and a solution that hopefully will fit everyone's needs and provide that level of protection that the citizens deserve.
Can I just add one thing to that? I think that's a really good point, and of course, what this study is concerned with is station locations. It doesn't rule out other opportunities presented to the fire department about potentially using additional resources in a particular area. What, and we'll come on to the recommended solution, but when we're talking about, this is when a station needs to be built, that doesn't say that something else in that local area in the meantime might not be a good option, it's simply saying that based on the calculations around response times and how much workload would be attributed to an engine company based there, that that would be the third priority of the three that are being put forward. It does not mean a temporary station or a ten-hour resource for weekdays or something like that, that would not be ruled out by this, as an example.
And I appreciate that.
Station locations, this is where we're heading towards.
I appreciate that, and that's, you know, truly what I think, in my mind, that being creative in those temporary...
Interim.
Interim, better word, is going to be extremely important. And certainly, I'm not an expert, and that's why we hired you, and that's why we look at you, chief, as to what are the answers here. But sometimes, some of the things that we think about seem so much more common sense, and it's hard to get your mind around as to, I don't understand why this is an issue. And I do understand why you're trying to formulate a plan that we can be successful in because we have the finances to do that currently, so thank you.
Well, because basically, we want to walk away from our discussions with a beginning of a solution. I do not, looking at this, I look at what everybody's desires and the response time, but then we have to get really realistic of what we can do with our resources to help protect your community a little more than it is now being protected. But I agree with you, the way you're approaching this, because if you came forth and said, okay, got to build seven stations, we would be up here going, what, how? Okay, so that's where we're at, and as hard as it is to think that someone's going to get an emergency call and they're not going to make it with that, I understand that. There's no question, I think we all, our heart aches for that person or people, whatever is going to happen, but what we're doing up here now is trying to find some supplemental along with a permanent station, and so you have to keep that in mind, not that I disagree with your questions or your remarks or anything like that, but that's kind of where we're at. So where am I on the next person, and was it on this side? I think Bill had, Bill, go ahead.
And Joe.
And then Joe.
Okay, so I understand that, Graham, I think you used the words financially feasible. Is that to describe the report that you brought forth, it's financially feasible?
I think it was, that was part of the consultation process. We wanted to make sure that it was a viable option, that we weren't coming here with the fourteen sites or whatever.
So the result of that, because the chief just mentioned, we didn't want to give a report that said we needed fourteen fire stations because the reaction would be, you got, you're crazy. Well, the reaction to these timelines is exactly that, you're crazy. And I think that that is the challenge that we're facing, is we look at those and say, really, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five, I mean, that just seems to be a crazy amount of time. And we have spent a great deal of time in this city talking about, for the last few years, about performance measurements, and we've talked exclusively about response times, and we've had, you know, huge discussions about response time. And I think that becomes our challenge. And I don't want to put, I don't want to put you in a position where you're trying to defend your research, if you will, but I think it's important that, that, you know, and I mentioned it earlier, we talked about the national standards on response time, we have got that benchmark. We also have the insurance services organization, you know, which is a geographic benchmark, which puts us, puts our fire stations closer and closer together. And I think your optimization map of one eighty one showed the result of if we geographically move it to get it within that geographic separation that ISO talks about, and then we use the five-minute national standard, now we see we've got this huge sea of optimal coverage in that central part, you know, for us, the central part of the city, where the core of the population is today. So now we want to apply that same logic, and I think this was my takeaway from the vice mayor's comments, is we want to apply that same logic now down to Austraea and out west, and all of a sudden, that didn't, those things didn't, you know, they didn't necessarily apply the exact same way, because we want to take a square peg from here and we want to put it in a square hole over there. So I think what that's producing is the theoretical conflict in our minds anyway about how do we, how do we do this? At the end of the day, even if you gave us a report that said we needed fourteen fire stations, there, we have to fund something. And whether we can fund two, or we can fund three, or we can fund zero, at the end of the day, we've got to, we've got to put up or shut up. That's what this council is put here to do. And I think we're spending a great deal of time looking at, we still have thirty more slides to go. We've got a great deal of information here that is not going to help us make the financial decision. At the end of the day, we've got a financial decision to make.
You're right, but we also have a public relation mission, and that's to get the information out there, because when you have this imbalance on a city, when you have the bulk of the population here, and then you say to that bulk, well, you've got too many people here, and we really need your resources, we're going to pull them up here, now it doesn't matter if they don't have the population because it's a moral issue. So, I mean, I'm just as frustrated to you with, Bill, but we can't keep saying, if we, if we, maybe we do this, maybe, we've got some suggestions, we've got a study, let's work within those confines of that. And yeah, Bill, you're right, we didn't do this, we didn't do that, and that's right, and this rule is that, and that's rule, but putting them all together and using that's not going to work. So let's bundle down here and figure out how we can work this. We've got to stop criticizing the system here. We've been briefed on them, where it is and where we're at, okay? Now, we've got to get out of that, we've got to slowly move to be able to accomplish what you're saying over there, Bill. Joe?
My approach, or my questions, several of them are financial in nature, and I'm not sure we're quite there yet, and I guess my question's more for the city manager, because I think my questions will play off of once he says what he's going to say, and I don't know where we are in that process. Are we close?
So Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo.
You have the floor.
After the recommended optimal solution for this next series, you're going to get an understanding of where Newland is on this as well. And then at the tail end of this, after all the presentation, all the slides are done, we're looking at what the recommendation for staff is. We have alternatives that we'll be going through at the tail end of this as well, and that's where we really will need council direction. So if you can bear with us to get through some of the rest of the slides, then we'll be there pretty quickly.
So I got the message, so maybe what we ought to do, I mean, write your questions down, but let's just sit back and let them finish these different options. It's going to be harder to keep your notes and make sure you got the questions, but let's do that, to let them get through, because at this point, it's getting too fragmented. And so we need to look at the options so we can coalesce in this, okay? We can't vote on it, just give me a little bit of like, hmm, maybe so, all right, we're going that way.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So the final recommended solution then is drawing together the outputs, the analysis that we've shown, the modeling we've shown, the additional optimization about extra sites, and trying to develop this optimal appropriate solution for the city, so drawing together to make some decision-making along the way. So this slide summarizes what we are putting forward as our recommended optimal solution for the city. And as I said earlier, all of this is prefaced, we're saying by the target year, and that's important. And it's also, these are, again, these are the permanent stations that we are recommending going forward. It does not in any way preclude us from looking at options that might involve other interim measures along that road. This is where we think by twenty-five, the city has to be, anything that happened before then can be advantageous, and interim solutions can be explored. But the scope of the project was looking at station locations towards these planning horizons, and so this is what we're recommending to that, to that end. And so coming through from the modeling that we've shown in that previous section, the prioritized order for the changes to make to the station locations across the city would be first to relocate station one eighty one as close to possible to the optimal site, and to do that, again, the year, say, by twenty nineteen, and that's purely based on the timelines to source land and build a new fire station at that location. The second priority would be West Goodyear, the optimal location is at Citrus and Yuma, and that would require an additional engine company to be in place by the time of that station opening. And then the third priority is South Goodyear, as we've already discussed, the optimal location... the optimal location is at Estrella and Willis. And again, that would require one additional engine company onto where, onto the current resource available. So, by 2025, the latest, that would involve construction of three new stations, closure of one current site, and the addition of two engine companies. So, that's just summarized in the map there. And we looked, obviously, at the impacts that would have on performance. So, here we compare the do-nothing 2025 position with the option of fixing five and adding three new sites in there. And we see significant gains across all parts of the city in terms of the response times that are provided. We also considered what the vehicle workload would look like. And this is an important part about the timings as well, is that while the southern parts of the city is clearly an emotive issue, and there are lots of reasons why an additional location would be helpful in terms of redundancy, when we looked at the statistics, we've shown that that should be the third priority of the three. There's also the consideration about if a engine company was added in to a new site, that's say, the optimal location at Estrella and Willis, if that happened tomorrow, that engine company would be running a very low number of responses per year. And that's a consideration for the fire department in terms of a number of issues that would have, if you had an engine company doing what would initially be less than one call every two days, that they would be sat there on station for not responding to incidents, probably 47 and a half out of 48 hours of their duty. That would be the pure statistics about that, based on what the current level of demand is within that area. So, that would be something to consider in terms of the timings. If it is that lower call rate for a vehicle to respond to, is that a feasible option? That's why we're not saying until 2025, that's when a permanent station has to be in operation. But before then, we need to consider what the workload might be like for those new engine companies in the area. And so, this map draws together the impacts of the new sites. So, on the left, what would be the response times in 2025 if there were no changes to the locations of stations? And on the right, what the optimal solution would provide in terms of response times. And we can see that the solution eradicates a large area of the red, the longest response times. But also, because we've got additional resource in the north of the city, those blue areas have reappeared again, because we've got more resilience, because there is an additional engine company in the north that makes quite a substantial impact on the resilience, and therefore, the ability to respond within five minutes in those local areas. And the same in the south city, by having two stations, that makes an improvement in terms of the blue areas that appear on the map as well. So, clearly, adding in stations makes improvements to the response times. But there's also the need to consider, do you need more stations to give you greater resilience, so in the north of the city? Or do you need it simply to make the coverage? And then also, if you are adding in new stations, are they actually operationally viable? Are they making enough responses to be considered a sensible addition? Clearly, if you wanted to cut out all of the red on the map, then you'd add in more and more stations in the south, but they would be doing maybe one call a week or one call a month. And that would be a question for whether that's an appropriate solution to be putting forward.
And Mayor, if I, and Council, if I may. So, this is a time, so, once the study became public, the latter part of last week, we had an opportunity to provide it to Newland as well, up in Estrella Mountain Ranch. Because in there, it says by 2025. And we've been working with them, and maybe the attorney can provide a little bit of information on it, but we're in active negotiations with Newland, we have been, for an additional fire station up in Estrella. So, after they were aware of the by 2025, or in other words, no later than, and in talking with them, I did receive a letter from Will, Bill Olson, William is what he has in the letter, but Bill Olson, he's the senior vice president for Newland Communities. And I'd like to read it. I think it's important for the public as well. So, it is regarding the fire station, and it says, "Thank you for the brief overview of the citywide fire station study recently commissioned by the City of Goodyear. As you know, prior to the issuance of the above-mentioned study, the City of Goodyear, NMP3, which is Estrella Mountain Ranch LLC, and AV Homes of Arizona LLC, developer of Cantomea, have anticipated the need for expanding fire protection services in Estrella. As such, the parties have continually worked together in planning to expand such services at the appropriate time. While we understand that the consultant which prepared the study on behalf of the City of Goodyear has targeted the opening of an additional fire station in Estrella on a 2025 time horizon, I am writing to confirm that NMP3, Estrella Mountain Ranch LLC, and AV Homes of Arizona LLC are actively working on an agreement with the City of Goodyear to expedite, again, to expedite the financing and development of the additional fire station on a more near-term basis, subject to receipt of the final approvals of the capital partners. We believe these approvals will be obtained. As always, we endeavor to support the city and be responsive to the growth-related needs of Estrella as a community. Best regards, Bill Olson." So, I thought that was important on the commitment that they are providing for this. And they too know that the need is, needs to be done more quickly. And we've heard that from council tonight. But that's one where we are actively working with them. And Rorick, I don't know if there's anything you want to add or not, because we are in active negotiations.
No, I think we're just, to reinforce, we've been in discussions for a number of months, putting together a framework of an agreement that demonstrates a commitment from the developer partners and some flexibility. So, there's still a few things to work through, but it's making progress.
Joe? Let me see, Councilmember Vazillo, sorry.
Yeah, I know, you've been quite a while with the negotiation with this, what I'm hoping. And again, don't want to tie your hands, don't want to tie the capital partners' hands or whatever, but I think it would be very helpful to this council if you talk to the powers-to-be to see if there's a possibility that maybe by the end of January, we've got something wrapped up or close to, so that you can bring it before us. Because some of the questions I have, and I think it ties right into this, ma'am, is I think that helps for the information for the council as they go forward to map out the financial piece of all of this. Okay? And I think that could be very helpful. A couple of questions I have. Do we have the land already owned for the Estrella location? Or is, as a result of the recommendation, is that something we have to purchase, or do we have that land?
So, we looked at both sites, Rainbow and Willis, which the city owns. And then we also look at Willis and Estrella as well. So, that would be something that we'd have to figure out if we go to Willis and Estrella.
We don't own it, though, right now?
Willis is in Estrella now.
Okay. Second question. How long from the time, well, first, you have to own the land, I assume. How long does it take, once you start the architectural design, to actually have a station turnkey open for operation?
We've heard about two years, so, plus or minus a few months from that, is what we've been hearing.
How long does it take to hire full staffing so that they're onboard? How much do you have to start in advance so that when you turnkey the station, that they're actually there, ready to go?
Yeah, so Lisa Nagel and I have been working on that. We've determined that to be about 18 months prior to the operational date, is when we would physically start the recruitment process, the testing process. So, it's a very, it's a longer, it's a lot shorter than it sounds. 18 months sounds like a very long time. But, I mean, there's a lot of steps that go into a recruitment, especially for 14 people, if you're hiring for a full station. But we would determine it'd be about 18 months to make sure we get them in the academy, and there's bids, tick plays for the station, et cetera. So, there's a lot of little pieces that go into that.
So, we're looking at not probably recruiting people who already have their fire science degrees. You're looking at academy training?
Yeah.
That would take all that to fill the 18?
They would come to us with all their work completed, but we would still send them to a regional academy. We feel that's very important for the safety of our members.
So, if I understand it correctly, six months after you decide to get the process going, you've got to start the recruitment process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. That's why I think it's critical from a timing, because this thing, you're timeline it out. That's what I'm trying to get in my head, is the timeline of how long, at the minimum, does it take to get this thing rolling? The longer we wait, the longer it takes it to be active. And I have some of the same concerns as some of my fellow council members when it comes. And that's why I asked the question on, probably didn't use the right term, risk analysis, risk assessment. But my concern was, one's out, and you have a long timeline to begin with, and you have nothing there. The risk assessment is one of those things that I kind of pride myself on as well. And I think Councilmember Stip probably described it better than that. But that's what I'm thinking about as a risk assessment, what happens when one's out, when you already have a long timeline. But I think that's very helpful, knowing that it takes that time. That's why it's important. And again, I'm not trying to tie the hands of the negotiation of the parties, but I think it would be very helpful to get that information because of this timeline. Now, if we can bring it in quicker, that's one thing. But it looks to me, if I'm getting information, and this is not my specialty, you're looking at two years, once you say, we're going. And that's why I would love to see 30 days to see what we have, because the financial piece, once you understand what you have now, it's got to be filled in, from both the west and up the hill. So, that, to me, is a very important component, because to me, it comes down of how are we going to finance all this? I think we all agree we need it. It's just a matter of how we pay for it, and how do we move it up to get that done. At least, that's my perspective. I don't want to speak for the others, but that's kind of my perspective. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Campo.
I have several questions, Chief, that perhaps you can help me remember. It's, we need 14 employees for one station, for one company.
Yep. Typically, we do hire 14.
14. And then if we do the 14, then we'll be fully staffed.
Correct.
All right. Does Automatic Aid ever leave our city uncovered by our own fire department? It does, doesn't it?
Yeah, so, if I could give you a scenario that recently happened in May, we had a first alarm fire in Avondale, and most of all of our units were assigned to that fire because of the breadth of that fire. The backfill started to occur almost in a simultaneous fashion. So, units from Phoenix and Glendale and Buckeye start to move up into those stations to be able to backfill that. So, Automatic Aid recognizes the pull from the, on the call, and then they also recognize the need to start to move those units in to help maximize the coverage in the different areas. The other catch piece to that is our operations chief and myself kind of constantly watching that to make sure that the backfill is occurring. So, we're constantly working in the system to make sure that those holes are filled appropriately.
Okay. Well, I just didn't want the public to ever think that we were not covered when our, all of our engines are out assisting other departments. I know that Automatic Aid is a wonderful service for our city, because it provides many additional equipment and men and ladder trucks and
And women.
Hook and ladder, are they still called hook and ladder trucks?
Sure.
Okay, good. And everything that we don't have, which saves us a lot of money, because we can use it from other stations. My next question is, I'm just estimating, if we built a station, it would be approximately four to five million for the building?
Correct.
And to equip it with the trucks and everything that we would need, I'm assuming it's going to be around four million. Is that too high?
Four million additional?
Yes.
Well, so, hard construction costs, we're thinking in the high fours, fives for hard construction costs.
Okay.
And then we know, from a vehicle standpoint, a purchase standpoint, between 600 and probably 720, 25, as far as a cost for a vehicle.
For a truck?
Yep. And then FF and E, which is all the stuff that goes into the stations. So, you're probably closer to $6 million, as far as a station.
Six million. Oh, counting the building and that, right.
Sign, land.
Okay.
Everything that kind of goes into a station, yes.
And then roughly, 2 million for personnel?
Yeah. And then also is the operations and maintenance of the stations, about 2.2 million, yes.
2.2. So, we're roughly looking at possibly 8.2 million for a station?
Correct.
Okay, to get it up in operational?
Correct.
Okay. That's why you can't just do it overnight. That's why it takes a couple of years just to put it out to bid, or to get it master planned, put it out to bid, and then start building it. And then, like you say, train your personnel, get them hired, get them in-house so that we can do. So, even if we started on this today, it's still going to be two years. So, we just need to figure out the financing part of it. Did, at any time, we ever, not we, I'm sorry, excuse me, Graham, did you ever consider moving 181 to West Goodyear? Or is that too far west for your projections?
In terms of the fact that there is an immediate hole to fill within the system, then the best thing to do would be to relocate 181 within that local area.
Okay.
That's
Yeah, I agree with you. I just didn't know if y'all had considered that.
We did. When we looked at the map to show where do we relocate 181 to, we actually considered all areas of the city. But of course, you certainly wouldn't locate it right next door to one of your existing stations.
No, no, yeah.
So, we just focused the map on the best areas that come out, which were the areas in around Litchfield, Van Buren.
Okay. Well, all the council realizes the need for an additional fire station in Estrella. There's never been a question that we did not recognize that. And we're going to work diligently to find a way to put one up there. We've got to get the money or whatever we need to do. And I just want to let everyone know, we're all working together for the same thing. While you do say you recommend it by 2025, that's simply a suggestion. It's not telling us we have to do that by that, or, I mean, it doesn't occur until 2025. We can do it whenever we feel it's needed. And as a council, we can decide ourselves whether to move forward right away or whatever we're going to do. And it's, we appreciate having this discussion with you and with you, Chief, and we thank you for your report. It's very enlightening. It's similar to the report we had before. However, now, we know where we're moving forward, and we have more development now than we did in 2008. So, we do thank you for that. Some of our questions, I'm sure you probably wish we hadn't have asked, but that's all right. So, but thank you very much. And this is for the chief, and please don't laugh, but what happened to Station 186?
That would be the south station.
That would be in Estrella? I've been waiting to find a 186 somewhere.
Yes. We'll put that there for you, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, I thought when you put it in Mobile, it would be 186. But when you put them in 187.
I don't know why, not sure why they picked seven.
Okay, I don't either. But thank you very much. Oh, and also, my last question is, you know, we're talking about starting an ambulance service in our city and have our fire run our own ambulances. So, that is an expense that we're dealing with right now as well. So, when we go forward with any of these fire stations, we're going to be aware that we will possibly be housing ambulances there that belong to us in the near future. We may, hopefully, we will bill for that, whether we have them in there right away or not. At least, it will be done, so that before too many terribly long years, we'll have full ambulance service for all of Goodyear by our fire department.
Did you want to answer any part of that, Chief?
It sounded more like a statement, but if you need me to answer something, I will.
All right.
Oh, sorry, Chief.
Councilman Holman.
Oops, sorry. Much of what I was thinking has been said, but I kind of wanted to state the obvious, because we've spent a lot of time on this tonight. But I think that we have made very clear that do-nothing is not an option. So, we can take that off the table. That's, and that we need to move 181. I think we've all taken a look at it and seen that it's just, it's not impossible, but it was kind of like many other things. You're better off starting new than trying to clean up a very devastated property. And it's so many ways. I still would like the story, I mean, that building was kind of doomed from the beginning. There was a great controversy about that building. And I don't really know all the ins and outs of it. Brian, you don't know either? Brian, you don't know either?
It was before Brian.
I didn't think anything came before Brian.
I was there in '94. It arrived in '92.
Okay. Well, I, I, it, it was a huge thing at the time, but it was pretty hush hush. Nobody really knew. They just knew it wasn't good, but knew. And so it, it brings to mind, anyway, that's kind of irrelevant, but I think we all, that that's something else we can all agree on. And that I think we also all agree that 2025, I understand that it was carefully worded and the language was careful so that, that no one had to feel they had to wait until 2025, that, that there was a need there and that in the sequence that, that that language made sense. But I think we all agree that that's too long. I think we've come to that conclusion. So I think we've come to some directive, clear directive about those things. And that now in the, then when I was going through it, whether we find, finding the money seems imperative at the same time we're making decisions. It's really hard. You can figure out whether it was the chicken or the egg. But in this case, we need, I think we need to be working on, on that piece because how do we make good decisions if we don't know where the money is or how we can get the money? So I, I mean, these are thoughts that were set by other people, but I, I just kind of think there are just some things we don't have to think about anymore because they're no longer an option. So let's move forward with what we can.
Thank you. In reference to Station 181, I think it did get an architectural award.
It did.
I think so. We're back in the history. I won't go, we're not going to go deep in it, but it's somehow it flicked up when you said that. So I think so. So let's say something nice about a station that saved a lot of people's lives and was very good to them. So, okay, so Councilon Aspern?
I don't think I'm jumping, I don't think I'm jumping ahead, but stop me if I am. So you just, you know, Sherilyn, thank you for kind of giving some forming to what we have discussed. And Councilmember Campbell started asking specific questions about the length of time it will take to get a crew ready, to build a station, you know, and, and the, the financial where for all for at all. So what, in my mind now, understanding that that's permanence, that's permanent station, that's going forward. But we keep talking about, what about the interim? What can we do in the interim? Are you going to tell me now for the interim, it's also going to take 18 months to get, you know, because I don't see that we need 14 people for the interim. But what does that mean? And maybe, like I said, I'm jumping ahead, but that's, that's what's in my mind is, you know, I get it for the, the, the station that's going to be permanent, but the, I want to hear solutions before that. And so how long will that take?
Those are actually in our options. And we'll, as we get, we got a few more slides to finish up with Graham, and then we'll jump right into those options as well.
I know there's options. I didn't think they were that detailed. So that's why I was asking the question.
Thank you, Janet. I'm going to, Vice Mayor, and then we're going to get on with those options. Will you do that?
Okay. First of all, I have a question for the, for the training. When you go through the Fire Academy, are you trained as a paramedic or would that be a secondary? Are we going to make sure everyone who goes through those 14 are all trained as paramedics as well since it's, or how do we do that?
No, we, we look for the best and the brightest. So regardless of whether they're an EMT...
And you took Bill?
Or...
I'm sorry, I had to.
Bill, I did not say that. The Vice Mayor did.
Complete the fifth on that. I think we, we look for the best and the brightest. So whether they are an EMT or a, a paramedic, we always look for the, for the best to bring into the organization. And if they are medics, then we feel very fortunate that the last five that we hired were all EMTs. So, you know, we, we get through that process by additional training. But the, the Fire Academy is a 14-week academy that trains them to be firefighter, you know, certified one and two. And they go through all, all of that, that process during that 14 weeks. So they come out fully equipped, ready to work on a fire truck.
Okay. And then my other comment was from, from what Brian just said, from our community partners up in Estrella. And for the public that might have missed this at the last several meetings, I know it was said last several times you presented, Brian also did state that we were working together, that they've always been a partner. That was never a question that they weren't going to work with us. They've never been negative on this issue. I, I think people need to realize that, that this is a lot of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is process that we can't go into the negotiation because I, I think that's important to know at this point, as you said that, and that would affect obviously your recommendations, which I'll make comments on after you get to all of that. Sorry, we keep stopping you. But I think that's very important to, to, to know that they have been working with us and Newland and AV Homes have always been a good partner. And it's, contract negotiations are not quick, unfortunately, you know, but they have not been ever digging their heels in. So I, I think people need to know that, especially up in Estrella, that the developers know this is an issue and want to work with us.
Okay, so go ahead.
We have a few more slides that Graham will finish up on.
And I'll go through these very quickly and just highlight the key messages. So the final part of modeling is what we term sensitivity modeling, but really is about stress testing the scenarios that we're putting forward. So, so there's five bullet points listed at the end. We looked at whether there's any variation around the optimal sites, whether there's options using city-owned land already instead of the optimal sites, looking at what would happen if demand rate was higher than predicted, what would happen if automatic aid wasn't in place, and looking at the response times without the nearest vehicles to that level of redundancy that we were concerned about earlier. So just focusing on those first three in terms of these slides. And so these two are both site search maps. This is similar to how we approached the question for Station 181. If the optimal site, which is shown i- in purple, was not available, where would you, where else would be good locations? So in terms of the optimal West Goodyear site, which is at Citrus and Yuma, the purple location down on, in, in the red area of the map, really we're saying that that's the best option, but somewhere just around there or just to the north or on, on Citrus would be a, a good option. And then i- in South Goodyear, the optimal site is, is at Willis and Estrella. And anywhere sort of within half a mile or so south of there would be seen still as a very good location. So there would be options within each as to where exactly the site could be located. If we went to the city-owned land, that would mean that we, instead of having the optimal site for 181, it was based here, and instead of the optimal site in West Goodyear, it was at, you'll have to remind me the exact location in West Goodyear.
Citrus and Harrison.
Citrus and Harrison. Moving to the, so they're taking the city-owned land approach and still using the same one in, in South Goodyear, the level of performance across city would be very similar still. So there is, while it's not quite as good as the optimal solution, choosing that already-owned land would still give a very close to the same level of performance. There is some, some scope there to potentially use the land already owned by the city. And the final element we tested was what would happen if instead of using the demand rate we were projecting, and we talked about this earlier, if we took a higher demand assumption, that actually the impact on performance would be quite low, even with quite a substantial gr- jump in the number of calls per year. And that's because now we've got these optimally located sites, so it's able to cope with an additional 10 or 20% of, of demand, but not have that substantial impact on, on the response performance that could be achieved. So there is, that's showing that the locations are, are robust. Even if we went with the sort of the city-owned land, there was definitely a good scope for improvement that could be achieved there. And that's the final part of the modeling. Slides covered off. Any questions about those last few bits and pieces to tackle there?
Questions to the right? Questions to the left?
Okay, so just, the, these summary slides that are here just say, well, we, we've talked through the whole process, but obviously it's a data-driven approach. And what we're showing is sort of like the, the cold, hard evidence about this, and then it is up to discussion about what happens next. And so that analytical approach has taken us through the data and through the projections that we've taken forward and developing the models that were tailored towards the exact needs of the city. And I think the, the key points were already been illustrated really by, by members of the council about some of the key assumptions that are coming from, from the work about rebuilding 181, about additional sites that are coming through. And I think final point from me before I hand over is that I certainly think that this, you know, the, the challenge faced is a question of what is achievable? What we tried to put forward was a plan that could actually be done, bearing in mind the, the timelines and the costs that were being mentioned by, by the chief. We certainly, I, I agree with Councilmember, we are certainly, we are recommending a site in the south of the city and a second station there. It's just that we would put that as a, a third priority in terms of the options that are on the table. And certainly, in terms of doing something in the short term, it would certainly be the third priority because the call volume there at the moment is quite low. As we look five to 10 years into the future, that becomes more important. But certainly that's what, what the priority is looking like in terms of where we are today. Thank you.
Go ahead. I think we're on a roll here.
Questions at all? No. Okay, Madam Mayor, so we're going to talk about options. So staff has presented, we, to you, five different options that we can talk about tonight. There's certainly a couple of different ways that we can go through this. One of those is that I could read through all of the options and then we could go back to the one that council most desires, has most interest in. Or I could read each option and then allow for some discussion.
Let me get some looking. Council? Why are you into this?
I don't want to get all of them.
I'm sorry, you don't want?
I don't, I don't want to get all of them.
All right.
I agree with Bill.
All or partial?
We can certainly talk about the ones that have the interim options, which is what I heard is the most interested council.
Let's go with that then.
Okay. So that will be option number four. I'm going to advance those slides to number four. So option number four would be accept the fire station study, including the study recommended locations, and explore moving the timeframes up for future fire station construction as well as providing interim solutions to the council. So we, we did a pros and cons on that for you. So one of the pros is the fire station study recommends we relocate Fire Station 181 currently at Yuma and Litchfield or Camino Oro to a more optimal location to better serve the city as a whole and allow Fire Station 183 to remain more in its first due. The other pro is that for West Goodyear, a fire station in West Goodyear would assist in the response times and call volumes for Station 184's first due. The Sadea community also is impacted as well, as you saw from one of the heat maps, that it actually improves some of the first due areas for 185 and 184. And the Citrus Road and McDowell area also receive good response times and allows 185 to remain in their first due more often. Another pro is the West Goodyear station would be constructed in a much more faster timeline and receive an all hazards emergency response engine out of that station. We could also explore placing a peak demand engine during the construction phase, which would be 10 hours a day, 40 hours a week to, at Fire Station 184 to help cover West Goodyear. Or we can explore placing a full-time engine company 24 hours a day, 7 days a week at Fire Station 184 until the West Goodyear fire station is constructed. Additionally, with the south, the construction is moved up in a much more faster timeline. But we could install, explore installing a frontier station. Now, if you remember from 2008, in that fire station study, public safety study, we looked at the idea of a frontier station. So it would be a modular type building that could be put in place while construction happens, and we could staff it with, for instance, in this, in this scenario, a two-person staffed vehicle. However, that is not the optimal for the fire department. We'd be very limited in what we could respond to fire-wise or EMS-wise. We call that a clockstopper in our business. We know that, that is not ideal, that we would prefer the four-person, all hazards engine company, but we also understand the impacts to the budget that it has in, in the future. Currently, Buckeye Valley Fire District does provide automatic aid out of Fire Station 326 to South Goodyear. And during the course of the data review for Fire Station Study, we did not see a significant amount of calls that occurred simultaneously. However, redundancy in the area that serves the current area is provided through, again, Buckeye Valley Fire District. Some of the cons for option four is the relocation and construction of Fire Station 181 was not contemplated in the current CIP. Thus, funding would need to become more avail, become available for this project. Staff needs to explore an appropriate site to house this station. For West Goodyear, moving the funding for this fire station up in the CIP would result in significant shift in the currently funded CIP projects. And there would be financial impacts for the operations and maintenance of the station to already projected or already operational projects within the general fund. And then for South Goodyear, moving the funding up for this station would have an impact on the CIP, just like West Goodyear. The interim solutions for South Goodyear may contribute to throwaway resources. If we do have to have a modular building, what do we do with that building afterwards? Additionally, interim solutions are not eligible to utilize geo-bonding or developer impact fee funds. A new station in South Goodyear may be constructed for lower call volumes, which Graham reviewed. And they may not be fully needed until later years as outlined in the station study. And then again, there's also financial impacts from the South Goodyear Fire Station to the, the general fund for the operations and maintenance of that station. So that is option four. And we did describe the interim solutions that are available. We'd be happy to consider other interim solutions as well.
Thank you. Councilman Pizzillo.
Chief, I think would be very helpful. Again, I go back to trying to get all of the pieces of the puzzle from a financial standpoint. But you have, if we, you have the cons
Yes.
of the variety up here. And, and again, I tend to agree with you with the interim solution of two. It's a stopgap. I, I'm not a big, I'm not a big fan of, of the two, two-person. I, I think what happens there is you're spending money and you still have to pull out another station if there's a fire. And to be honest with you, I'm not sure how effective two would be on an EMS call because my understanding is four individuals are better served when they're actually working on a patient for a heart attack, et cetera. So I'm not real comfortable with the two. But what I think would be helpful, and I don't know about the others on here, would be helpful is on your con side, if you can give us some options on what the impact would be and the CIP and some of the other potential operational issues if this is shifted. Okay?
Yes.
And what, and then you'll get, I think, more detailed upside and downside when we actually see that dollar impact. And again, I go back to, I'm hoping, and again, I don't want to tie anybody's hands in negotiation, but I'm hoping in, in by January, and I know we have the holidays, at least the end of January, we may have all of the pieces of the puzzle.
Sure.
So then we can look to see as we start moving these around, where may we, might have to move some funds from the CIP to get this to happen. Because in the one and 181 to relocate, that, that station's, you, you can't live in there. You can't use it.
Correct.
So if you want to go into a 20-year-old station and spend, and I still think 1.2 is not going to cut it, but the 1.2 you have in there to fix it up on something that had some health issues, then you've got to assume that you got them all, number one.
Correct.
As opposed to billing something new, at least going to come with some warranty and some protection and more updated stuff that possibly will prevent those type of health issues. Yeah, I, you know, the, to me, the issue is where can you move the stuff to come around on there? Because you can't put firefighters back in there. If I've done the tour, it's, it's, it's not a good building, so.
Correct.
With that, I think that would be helpful, if, if we could see a bigger picture on how things may have to move to make this happen.
And Madam Mayor, we, if I may, we, we just, we wanted to make sure council heard all of the potential options. While some aren't ideal for us, we want to just make sure that they understand there are, there are many options that we're willing to look at and we understand what the impacts are, that a phased approach sometimes helps offset some of the budget needs in other city departments. But we just wanted to make sure that everybody heard all of the potential options.
Councilman Stip.
Mayor, I don't know if perhaps this conversation on any option is not premature until we get what we need to get from the Newland agreement situation. So perhaps this is something that comes back to us once we have that. Because we can sit here all night long and talk about all these options, but we're never going to make a decision until we have this Newland agreement. going to make a decision until we have this Newland Agreement finished. So perhaps this is best left for another work session, perhaps in January.
I don't think we're making a decision here.
No, I realize we can't.
This is a work session and.
Yeah, we can't make a decision, but to hear all this information and then to wait six weeks, or eight weeks, or 10 weeks before we hear back from Newland, and then we're going to rehash it all over again, I don't know that it makes sense to hear it all tonight. We've heard a lot of information. We, I think we've been very clear about, about moving, relocating 181, about advancing the South Goodyear station. I think we've been very clear about that as a council. I think we provided enough direction for staff to get moving. Let's hear what the, hear the rest of it later on, once we have the final say from Newland. Otherwise, we're just, these guys are just yapping at this point, in my opinion.
No, you're not yapping. You're giving us good information. I just have to correct him every once in a while because he does get emotional about this, but you weren't yapping, you were giving us great information.
Sure.
And it's a very difficult position for you to be in as the chief. And it's even for us as policymakers, this is not easy. We had a bankload of money, no problem, so. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, if we could just create all the fire stations that we needed and all the police officers we needed right away, I think everyone would be happy. Because I think everybody up here sees government role, public safety is the number one role of government at the local level. That's really what it is. And I don't think our citizens really understand maybe how we got here. And I think that's kind of important, that, you know, our criticism, or when we're asking questions, it's not a criticism, I want them to know, of our chief or of our city manager. A lot of this happened during the recession, that we basically froze. We froze everything. Our fire department, I know police as well, but fire took, you know, no pay increases, they lost benefits. We were able to keep our staffing levels at their current levels for our citizens. So I think the citizens really need to understand that, that this isn't just like, oh, we're trying to delay it to delay it. We didn't have the monies, that was the Great Recession, with a lackluster recovery, if I could say that, even if that was so much. This council, just so the people know, this council has spent, and with city manager's direction, has spent time trying to reinstate benefits, trying to work on what's called salary compression. Because we had people who were working for us that knew hires were making more, and that simply wasn't fair. So we have been working with this. This is not a new issue to us. We knew this was coming. When we sat and had retreats, we knew this was money that we were going to have to come up with. When we talked about lowering the food tax, I know, I was like, we can't, we've got this coming, we've got to pay for this. So I think that's really important. It's also important to know when we talk about public safety, that, you know, we can look at these data, and the data was absolutely wonderful. It really did help me see where the calls are. But it's also important to know that public safety, you know, one life matters. We keep a station down in Mobile. I mean, if you look at the modeling, probably not a thing, but, you know, we have citizens there, just like we have citizens in Australia. We have citizens in West Goodyear. And we are doing the best we can. And like I said, this is no reflection on the chief and your crews, what they're doing every day. We need to make sure that you have the resources as we grow. I am, I guess, leaning towards option four, knowing what we know now. I would agree, I'd like to see not just the two-person up there, because what we've talked about with other options before, and not being an expert in this field, but just what I've learned from y'all, that I think that's really important. I'd also like to see, with Australia, it kind of is, kind of is going to sit out here because we have community partners for that one. And, but then we also got to look at our bonding. I'd like to see all the numbers come back next time on how we can get, you know, all three of these stations up as soon as possible. Obviously, just the hiring of the staff, we can't do, even if we built them all at once. So I have a question on that. When we design our station, I know Basis School does something where they basically use the same template. Is that something we can do for these fire stations to save any money? Or does it save money?
Yes, it certainly can. And I think a lot of it is, previously, we always looked at the neighborhoods that it was going into and try to make it as aesthetically pleasing into the neighborhoods as possible. We can certainly look at that going forward on potentially the next three stations here that we talked about tonight, is making sure that they fit well on the land that's allotted to us, but that they also blend in well without being overly aesthetically pleasing.
And the elevation, the elevations of the stations.
Yes, the elevations. Thank you.
And then my other question would be for the city manager. You know, like I said, I'm leaning towards four with the interim solutions, to make sure that we're covered and we have that redundancy. But in the future, as we get the development agreements, we're very fortunate that we have good community partners in Australia. Is that something we can ensure that public safety is part of those development agreements? Or has the law changed that we can no longer do that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no, the law hasn't changed. It is something you can bring up when you have new development come forward. And historically, we've attempted to do that on a, on a per-development basis. There are exceptions, notably the West Goodyear group. Back when we first did those development agreements, when we were looking at trying to fund a wastewater treatment plant. So that was the focus of that group, the development group. Yeah, so you kind of balance things out. So there was not a public safety component in those sets of agreements beyond the public, the fire site itself. But it's something we always try to address with development agreements, at least over the last 10 years and going forward.
Because I think since we've kind of gotten behind the eight ball with the recession, that's something we really need to keep on the front burner as more people want to come build.
Yes, go ahead.
And if I may also address that. So in large master planned communities, it's a lot easier to be able to then get fire stations, especially assisting with the capital and O and M as well. The funding mechanism we have for fire stations in Goodyear is through development impact fees. So when a permit is pulled on a house, there's a development impact fee that's paid and a portion of that gets set aside for public safety, that we're able to use those dollars. So like West Goodyear, that'd be the funding mechanism, is those impact fees. It does not address the operation side, which is 1.8 to 2.2 million a year. But it is easier in large master planned communities to be able to insert that type of requirement within a development agreement for fire service.
So when Amaranth gets going down in Mobile, we already have one for that one, right?
We did, yes. And the development agreement stays with the land, correct?
Correct. The development agreement down there did attach and run with the land. So when they come back, that, we have that agreement in place, not to say it wouldn't be renegotiated with the future landowner, but it did have public safety components in it.
What about King's Ranch?
Ooh, now you're going way back.
Sorry.
No, I don't.
It had stations, but I think it had a, I can't remember. We'd have to look at that.
I'm just curious.
I mean, it's still in place, but did it have a, I don't remember if it had an O and M component. It did have sites.
I'd like to.
It had sites and no O and M, yes, you're right.
One thing more of what Councilman Loritano said, through all of this, guess what? Our city kept growing. People kept moving here.
Correct.
So, so the downturn didn't stop the growth, it just put us in a situation of trying to catch up with it. So you just can remember that. So as we talk all about these things, everybody kept unpacking their suitcases. I'm going to go this way first.
I just had a comment on what Sherri got done.
Oh, okay. So, so we always forget that. Couldn't say you can't move to our city, we're filled up, so it's open.
Just on what Vice Mayor was saying, and I think it may be helpful for us, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but, you know, we get these COAXs that have said, what's the impact on public safety, blah, 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 and we, oh, it's going to be served by Station whatever. I think it would be very helpful for us in the future, from this moment forward, knowing what the farthest distance is from the current station, what the closest distance is and what the anticipated response time is. So we're aware of that the moment that we get a development come before us. So that if we've got questions, or we can do that, we can add stipulation that says, make an announcement when people buy, or whatever the deal is. I think that would be very helpful for us. Instead of just saying it's going to be served by Station 183, that doesn't, that doesn't tell me anything if it's 15 minutes away. So I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I'd like to see that.
That's interesting, because we had some developments when I was on the council, and we actually verbalized that, that said to the developer, this is fine, but you have to tell, you know, your people that there's no fire within a certain distance. So we did that, but it's been a while, so I could be faded a little bit on.
I don't think there's consensus on that.
Yeah. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just for clarification, we're collecting development fees when permits are pulled out west? We still collect development fees there, right? Okay. For public safety?
Yes.
This side. Councilman Holm, do you have anything left? Okay.
Do you want to say anything?
Okay. Councilman Campbell?
I'm quick. I believe growth pays for growth. I'm a firm believer because we love having the developers come and build in our city. But with that, that brings us as a city, we have to provide more fire and police. And we need to be able to work out some kind of an agreement or partial pay or something. And I really would like the city manager to keep that on his burner, so that he knows we're interested in working out with whoever comes to our city. Because it's not like they know that they don't want to provide fire service themselves. And maybe we just need to tell them, because we're so spread out and we don't have fire stations on every corner. So, and my next point is, I would be opposed to any two-man crew covering, because I can tell you firsthand, had I not had four firemen working on my husband, he would have died.
Thank you.
Councilman Osborn?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank our citizens that have really wanted to hear about this study, wanted to hear what some solutions may be. And I know that tonight didn't answer everything. I know we're still working on it. And, and because of that, I want to thank the press for being here, because they're helping get the word out of what's going on and, and what we're trying to accomplish and that it's, it's a very complex issue. It's not an easy thing. But I also want to thank, Chief, you and your crews, because it was stated, you can't improve what they're already doing in that turnout time, and I'm so proud of that. And, and I want, you know, you to let them know about that. As we, you know, I understand where Councilmember Stipp's coming from, there's not a whole lot more we can talk about tonight until we have a few more answers. I think that as you come back to give us some more answers and talk about solutions, there's a couple of things I'm curious about, and one of them, you mentioned the modular. You know, the modular unit that is in Mobile is going to have to be replaced eventually.
Correct.
Maybe that's something, we use this modular here for the interim, for wherever it's going to be placed, south or west, and then it gets moved to Mobile as the, as the alternative. I mean, that's maybe a way that we progress with that.
Yep.
I am curious, having 181 now stationed with the Yuma gang, right?
Yes.
How has, how, if you were to look at this timeframe, the call volume and all that, has it helped having two crews there, helped really, you know, the West Goodyear and all that? And if it did, would part of that interim solution be that maybe another four-man crew is housed at Yuma? That can help with, you know, I mean, maybe that's part of, and I agree with you, it can't be two men, it's got to be four or women, but it's got, yeah, I threw that in.
Thank you.
But, you know, maybe that's part of, you know, the solutions and.
Yes, and so we have seen the latter, 181, helping out at the Yuma and Saraval stations on their call volume. That, that first due area is, is a big expansive area. So they've definitely had a big impact on the call volume there. That is actually one of our recommendations, is to have either an impact shift. So we put it up during the busiest times of day and run it for 40 hours a week, and there's other cities that are having benefit from that, Chandler, Scottsdale, they're having definitely seen some benefit from that 40-hour vehicle. Or we could put up that 24/7, 365, four-person vehicle out of Station 184 to help with the west call volume, for sure. Thank you.
Those are definitely the things that I'm interested in.
Okay.
And I do appreciate, I mean, I think we have great partners. We reach out to them and keep talking about finding things like that.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, I think we're just about at the point of closing this meeting, but I do want to make an appeal to the public. This is a real trying time and people's emotions are high. But negativity and name-calling never, never works. And so I want them to be a part and a helper to us coming to solutions and join us in wanting to improve things, but in the right way and with the right information. So I thank the staff for being here tonight. You always get in these long, long sessions and then you have to work through it. And I'm sure you'd like to be home once in a while instead of here. So with that, yes, Brian.
Yes, I would like to do a very quick recap, if I may, Mayor, before you adjourn. So, and I have my most excellent person here assisting me as well. So just in summary, what we're looking at is, because I want to make clear when we walk out of here, council members looking for solutions, speed up construction, the new stations to provide services sooner than 2025. We agree that rebuilding, rebuilding Station 181 is a priority, and that'll come with looking at sites and, you know, Goodyear municipal complex will be considered in that. We have site constraints, but we'll look at options in that general area. Emphasize that response times are important, as important to them as population density. Not comfortable with two-person frontier stations, so that is something we're not looking at at this point. Like to know the impact to the CIP as a result of scheduling funding for 181 more quickly. We know we'll have about $1 million for that that could be freed up, and we'll have to add to that. And the Newland Agreement, we're very clear that we are going to continue to work with the partner, Newland, to get the agreement done. So we are working in good faith with them. And so that is one that we'll be focusing on. And part of that was, there was not clear consensus on what options to look at for Australia right now until we get the Newland Agreement across the finish line. And then, and when we have more clear timeframes for that, then we can look at other options out in Australia. And so the last one is COAX for new development. I'm not sure there was consensus. I know Councilmember Stipp asked, and I didn't sense that, but I, I just want to make sure to include the distance from the farthest station, closest station, response time.
I.
Add the time within the COAC, which is a staff report.
Sure.
Okay, there is consensus on that. At the first go-around, I didn't sense that, but I, we have that now.
You have the closest from a time distance to the, like the entrance to the place, to the farthest area in the place?
Within the development.
Within that development. And then that from distance, and then the same thing for response time.
Okay. And West, West Goodyear, we are, that's one where there was some discussion on that, looking at options at, to put that at 184 for now as an interim, and then also looking at accelerating that location over at Harrison and Citrus. So that's the, just to summarize, that's the direction that we have. I think the next thing you'll see is, is we, we should have the Newland Agreement in front of council before long, and then the other part of it is we get into the budget. Early, early in the budget process, CIP will be looking at funding for the other stations as well.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Brian, Indian School in 303 East Side, that big, huge building.
Yes.
What is that?
619,000 square feet spec building that is being built by First Industrial. They are building that speculative, which means that there's not a tenant that they were, a business that they were building it for. But they're already getting significant interest in that, so that's a positive for us. But we don't know who's going into that at this point.
Could that be multi-tenants? I mean, it's a huge building, or is that designed for one large tenant?
Could be one big one.
Those types of buildings can have, you can put additional interior walls to have more than one tenant, certainly.
It is a huge building.
It is big.
Okay. Any other? All right, with that, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is finished.